It's your credit if you sit for even a few minutes of this one.
Hi, how are you?
Hello there, how are you?
Good, thank you.
How are you doing? Are you the only two that are going to be here?
We are.
So you drew straws about who's going to go to basketball games and who's going to come to the game.
Yeah.
Is that what happened?
As long as you know, fortunately, I love being here.
Okay.
These are very powerful. It's mighty very powerful.
If I could have people come in and take their seats, although shortly I will ask you to rise for the pledge anyways. Okay, we have an echo. Couple of times, meetings ago, I couldn't get my voice over this microphone for all the tea in China, and now I've got a full echo here. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education for Tuesday, January 29th. Present at the moment is Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Conpetito, Mr. Lu, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mr. Dwyer. We expect Mrs. Iaccona.
She's right there.
Coming in.
Coming in. Mr. Fadavine, Mr. Carey, and Mrs. Brand. Okay, so now if you could rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a full agenda tonight. We debated as a board whether to hold the meeting here or at Ludlow, maybe even at half court during the basketball game between Ward and Ludlow tonight. I can only presume that those who are here probably drew the short straw at home while the other half of you is over at Ludlow watching the game. But I appreciate the fact that you're here and public comment will be taken on the budget and any item that we're going to act on tonight. I would give a couple of, I'll say, preparatory comments. And for those of you who, many of you have not been at our budget hearings, you might say, well, how did we get here? And at our last budget discussion last Thursday, two board members asked essentially the question of where are we going in the long term and is this community going to be affordable? And a couple of other board members said, I understand that is an issue, but the superintendent presented a budget with an under 1 percent increase, except for the two line items that we all know about, healthcare and pension, and we ought to support that. And then there are other board members that were somewhere in between that argument. I think what you should take from that is that this board is representative of the views of this community on the issue of what can we afford and what kind of school system we can afford. And so it is incumbent upon us to ask questions, get information, and then after discussion and debate, make the best decision for this community that we believe is appropriate at the time. So the fact that we're asking the questions should not cause people in the audience to -- you should all take a breath. Some of you may have come saying, I hope that they adopt every idea that is put out there. That's not likely to happen. Some of you may have come to say, I hope they don't think of anything. That is also not likely to happen. It'll be somewhere in between, and I hope that you will watch our debate, and when you come up for public comment, a lot of what we will talking about will involve personnel because you can't make budget decisions without impacting personnel. And so I would ask you to remember the basic rule of Robert's Rules in debate, which is you should comment on and debate the principles and not personalities. You should comment and debate the motion and not the motives that people might have so that we can be as polite as possible in our discussion and mindful that we're talking about people's jobs that they have, and we're also talking about program services that some students depend upon. For the budget portion of the meeting, we will, we have three pages of items to go through. My hope is that as a board, we will through discussion go through all three pages so that we can then fashion a motion that the public can understand, here's what the board is going to act on. And then therefore you can be informed by that because maybe you came out because there's an idea on one of those lists that you are supportive of or opposed to, and you find that it doesn't make the list, it's not part of the motion. Well, then perhaps you don't need to come up and speak so that perhaps our goal of trying to get this decision made by the end of the night is possible. Many of you have seen that we have called a special meeting for tomorrow. That is not because we guarantee that we're going to hold this off till tomorrow, but to comply with the 24-hour notice rule, we had to post a potential of a special meeting. Now, in the event at late at night, we need to have a special meeting. We have to make the decision by tomorrow to give the administration time to turn the budget around and present it to the town per our town charter by the 31st or prior to the 1st of February. So the purpose of the special meeting is not to delay the vote, but to assure that we have complied with town charter requirements. Having said that, let me move to the first item, which is approval of the minutes of January 15th, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 15th, 2013. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Iaccona, Mrs. Gerber, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. And the other comment I'll make in order to ensure that we try and get through the agenda is that I will go from student reports to old business and ask the board's indulgence to skip the committee liaison reports and superintendent's reports till the end of the night so that we can get to the business items at hand. We'll hold them just at a different time. So student reports. Can I assume that's with the two of you here that you also drew the short straw and you're not at the basketball game?
I mean, I wouldn't say it's unfortunate. I like being here, but yeah.
So please, let us know what's happening.
Good evening, Board of Education and other guests. My name is Mark Rangello, and I'm privileged to speak on behalf of Fairfield Ludlow High School tonight. I'd like to share a couple of accomplishments and key events that Ludlow community is taking part in. First off, a statewide Scholastic Art Awards program recognized several of Ludlow's students this past month, and this program recognizes the work of talented young artists, grades seven through 12. Four of our students were awarded with a gold key, four of them with a silver key, and four with the honorable mention. Additionally, over 30 of our musical students from jazz band, orchestra, chorus, and band have auditioned and were accepted to the Western Regional Festival this past month, and the concert took place at Darien High School Saturday, January 19th. Four Ludlow students placed first in their respective art, PTA reflection categories, including photography, dance, literature, and visual arts. Eight others won honorable mentions. And today marked the final day of midterms, and spirits are high here at Ludlow. Also, our student body is excited about tomorrow's school-wide volleyball tournament. That summarizes the accomplishments and activities at Ludlow. Thanks.
Do we have any questions for our representative from Ludlow? Please.
Hi, how are you? I am the representative from Ward High School, Danielle Clark. Some of the activities that are going on at Ward are as follows. In our club student forum, which is the club that runs the school store, just opened their school store Thursday, and it's already a huge success, so we're going to pursue that later on throughout the year, and hopefully it becomes more aggressive. The ninth grade elective night coming up on the 5th is a go, and that's exciting. I remember when I was a freshman, that was the biggest thing, so we're looking forward to that. You know, just as Ludlow midterms are over, and again, the stress level's gone down at Ward, but you know, everyone's excited because of the third semester starting soon. And a number of our students were awarded for the National PTA Reflections Program. I just want to, you know, touch about four students who were recognized in photography, Tenzin Dickey, music, Mitchell Yo, visual arts, Eliza Koryeva, and then special artist Stephen Bartlett. These were just for some of the students who were given awards. And for music, our spring musical, The Sound of Music, is coming along very well. And in the choir department, we're going to start preparing for the townwide choral festival, which is, you know, fun. And then if I may, like, have an opinion on the budget tonight, is that allowed?
I assume you might, so certainly if you want to make that as part of your student report, feel free.
Thank you. Well, as a former band student, the music department is extremely important to me, and I value it a lot, and I think, you know, the talent that comes from both Ward and Ludlow is amazing, beyond belief. So I think that we have to consider the talent and the effort put into it, the time, the hours, the money put into it. It's something that a lot of people and teachers value as well. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for our Ward representative? So I will say, as we always have, that you're welcome to stay. We understand if you leave, our discussions tonight on the internet and the budget, as well as Fairfield Ludlow ed specs, may be of interest to you, so feel free to stay and listen to the discussion and the debate. We'll move on to old business, which is approval of the educational specifications Fairfield Ludlow High School. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the educational specifications for Ludlow, Fairfield Ludlow High School. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Iaccona. The Board received enclosure number two, which is a very thick document, and at your table is the, just the pages that represent the educational specifications. And I'll remind the Board that we are faced with what has become a historical question, and that is, do we present the fully loaded needs of a school to the town bodies? And you'll see within this document, that total could be around 23 million. Or do we say, no, this is a project that has to be done in phases, and so the space needs and the windows are the two priorities, that's what we want to try and accomplish, and that's only about 8 million. And then there are other variations in between. And so I invite your discussion on that so that we can decide what level of ed specs we want to forward to the town. Does anybody have a comment at the moment or a discussion? Or, yes, Mrs. Brand.
I have an enclosure nine from January 15th that also had education specifications. When I look at these and then I look at this document, we have quite a range here. I'm rather confused that we're actually doing this as a voting item when we started with this, and now we're talking about something different. This is the first time we're looking at this document, and it has a series of different options.
If I recall the January 15th discussion, we discussed the concept of does the, should the ed spec have only one thing in it or everything, and that the board would then be in a position to choose which of the items they want to move forward. So I think we agreed that the document that was forwarded to us for this meeting would include everything, not because it was being recommended that everything be done, but so that the board would be fully informed of what choices they could make. So I think that's how we got from the January 15th document to the one that's in front of you.
If I may, as a follow-up, the request that was made to the first selectman, I believe, was for an addition, not for a renovation of this size.
The letter for that went out quite a bit ago, so does Dr. Drittl remember what the request was?
I don't remember. I know we asked for, whoa, we asked for a, that the first selectman appointed building committee for the Ludlow project. I don't remember whether that letter specified that, but of course, if the board approves an ed spec larger than that, then we can send a revised letter that says the board has decided to push for a larger project.
I think, I think that was where I'm going, whether or not the two are going to have to match up.
Right. And I've discussed with the first selectman that, you know, there's a range of options here because I've been at some of these meetings where we propose a relatively small-scale project, and then some people in the town say, well, wait a minute, why don't we do it all at once? Why are we, why are we spreading this out? We're just going to have to come back in two years for more. The ed specs were sort of the full project, with the exception of the board had requested that we examine the feasibility or cost of air conditioning. If you remember, that was pretty much the discussion. And so we asked Bill Silver when he did it to add the cost of air conditioning to this, which adds about $9 million to the project. So right now, the ed specs include the cafeteria expansion, the windows, the roof, it's not the whole roof, just the part of the roof that needs to be redone, and the renovation of the lavatories. What we had him do was cost out the various options so you could decide, you know, where you wanted to go with it. So the most expensive option, which is everything plus the air conditioning, is 23,411,000. That's under tab nine, that's where all the money is.
Do we have other board comments that people wish to make? Mr. Fadavine.
Yeah. What I'd like to do, because this is certainly a very important issue in how the town is moving forward with the high school, and we have a very large agenda in the budget. I would think it'd be prudent and wise maybe to try and postpone this and move to postpone to our next regular meeting because I think it really can't warrant a discussion here tonight in view of the budgetary pressures we're facing, and these are important decisions, and depending on the budget, may also depend on which way we move forward with the high school expansion, which is necessary. But I'd be concerned that decisions tonight may be, may not be the best time.
I don't think you made it as a motion. Mr. Lu, you had a comment.
Thank you very much. I think it's extremely apropos that we're discussing this tonight at our budget meeting. We're talking about adding 8 to 23 million dollars to a facility, which, and then we're also talking about cutting programs. This is, in my opinion, I know it's not shared by all board members, but in my opinion, this is the fault of not dealing with this issue of population when we knew we had a population problem at the middle schools and that it was going to move on to the high schools, that we did not embrace that at the time. I'm going to say the dreaded R-word, redistricting, because this board has not yet had a real conversation about this. And as we are looking at cutting programs, we're being asked to look at an 8 to 23 million dollar project? It just doesn't make sense. I cannot support this at this time whatsoever.
Thank you. We do have a space need, and so therefore at some point, we do have to make this as a decision, but I understand.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fadavine made a motion, and I'm trying to second it, and you're not allowing that, and my hand was up first. Instead, everybody's taking the mic and making political statements.
Actually, I think my hand was up first.
Excuse me, Mrs. Iaccona, I did not recognize what Mr. Fadavine said as a motion, and am going to get to him, but I would appreciate it if you would not interrupt in trying to speak over other members and allow me to manage the meeting appropriately. So now, Mr. Fadavine. You suggested it, but I didn't hear it officially in the form of it, that you wanted to make it as an official motion, so I apologize if I didn't hear the word, but if you wish to make it as a motion, feel free to do so.
I apologize for not being as clear as I could have been. Yes, I move to postpone this item until the next regular meeting.
And is there a second? Mrs. Iaccona, any debate on the motion? First, the motion maker should be allowed to comment.
I think my comments are, similar ideas commented in the sense that I think it's a very important issue. There's clear needs for the expansion of the high school. The direction we go in the expansion, I think, is going to warrant some more discussion than we have time for tonight in view of our heavy agenda. We have a more pressing issue with the budget right now. Our decisions on how to move forward with the expansion of the high school, which is required, may depend on the budgetary issues that are coming forward in the next several days.
Or hours.
Hours. So I think that, I don't think prudent and wise decisions can be made on the high school expansion at this time until we have better guidance as to where we're going with the budget.
Mrs. Brand.
Actually, I think postponing this would be a great idea, quite frankly. One, I think we've got more than enough to do for one night. Secondly, I'd like to see the letter that we sent. I'd like to see what we asked for in the first place. Doing this is kind of backing in, to be very frank with you. I've never seen options like this come before a board in this manner, and I don't think this is necessarily the way we should be going. We decide what a need is, identify the need, we have ed specs, we move the ed specs forwards. We don't try and do, in part, what a building committee does, which is exactly what this is doing. So I'm very uncomfortable with this format as it is, and I think we need more information to do the job right before we go forward. For now, that's it.
Any further comment? Are there any members that are not ready to postpone this and want to comment differently? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a vote, but before we take a vote, we should go to the public. For those who may be interested in the Fairfield Ludlow project, the vote is to postpone till the next regular meeting, which would be the end of February. Are there any comments from the public that you wish to make?
On postponing.
On postponing, not on the project itself, but on the issue of postponing. I have these CVS readers, so I need these for the agenda, but then when I look out, you're all a blur, so I have to take them off to make sure I don't miss anybody. I see nobody coming up to speak, so we're back to the board. Anybody that want to make a further comment? Mr. Carey.
Just a question. Mr. Chair to the Chair to the Superintendent. Does delaying this at this time put us off the schedule the town wants us on for this project, or will we be okay waiting till our next meeting to have this discussion?
I think we, I think we'll be all right. We'll get a better idea of the town's sort of schedule when we have the capital planning summit, which is coming up February 7th. So timing might actually work out better.
Any further questions from the board? Are you ready to vote? All in favor on the motion to postpone to the next regular meeting? I have a unanimous vote. The issue is postponed. Our next business item is the second reading of the policy 6417, Instruction Student Internet Use. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve policy number 6417, Instruction Student Internet Use, and that is enclosure three. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Cannelli, Mrs. Gerber. Mrs. Cannelli, you made the motion.
I think it probably would be prudent. We're familiar with the issues at this point, so I think it's best to go straight to board comment.
Okay. Mr. Lu.
Thank you. I sent a letter to all of the board members, and I'd like to discuss this again. A staff attorney from the ACLU reached out to me after hearing from parents and reading about our internet policy in the local papers. What I want to stress was that he was extremely supportive of our trying to navigate through uncharted territories, but cautioned us that, in his opinion, the way that the policy was written now would really leave us open to the possibility of future lawsuits. And given that this is a person who deals with rights situations, my feeling is we should listen to this person who has offered his services to come and meet with this policy committee, to offer up suggestions and to help us with, with this policy. And so it would be my recommendation that we send this back to the policy committee and that they reach out to Mr. McGuire for his assistance in this matter.
So to be clear, are you making that as an official motion?
Yes, you're right. I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Make a motion.
No, not a second. There's a second over there, Mrs. Brand. As the maker of the motion, do you have any further comments or?
No, thank you. Well, just that, you know, if this, if this is the person who excels in rights situations, it would do us, I think it would help us so much, and it would show us that we've done our due diligence if we were to ever go into lawsuits in the future. So I just don't see how this is not a win-win situation.
Thank you. Mr. Carey, you have a comment?
Comment and question. Just to start through the chair to policy committee chair, Mrs. Cannelli. My understanding was from our last discussion that we had our legal counsel look at this document.
Yes, we did.
And our legal counsel was comfortable with this document?
Yes.
So my question, Mr. Chair, is, I'm confused as to the process here and the propriety of one of our board members discussing our policies with ACLU. I would expect that that type of discussion would come through the chair or possibly the chair of the policy committee when dealing with an organization that's a special interest that could put this town at financial risk. I'm comfortable if our team has worked with our legal counsel and our legal counsel's advice that we pay for. I'd be very uncomfortable inviting a special interest in to write our policies for us. So that's my comment. And my question is going to be moving forward, as individual board members, how are we going to behave, I thought we had a board handbook about this, when interacting with outside groups? Because I'm very concerned about what I'm hearing here.
My personal opinion is that any board member has their own right to do their own due diligence and have conversation with a variety of people to arrive at what they think is a proper opinion for them to have, and so I find no fault with any board member talking to anybody about any topic. Mr. Fadavine.
Yeah. Obviously, I'm on the policy committee, and we debated this quite a bit and also talked to the counsel. And I think that certainly in my opinion and our legal counsel's opinion, this particular policy would be constitutional. Now, the question I think arises whether we want to go to the limits of the Constitution and do something else. And if you're going to send it back to policy, we might suggestion that you get some sort of sense of the body of the board as to what level of privacy they want to instill or not, because this is what came forth from the policy committee as a recommendation, and if they're going to turn it back, they should, I think some guidance should be given as to what direction the board as a whole may want to go in as far as go to the extent of the constitutional limits or hold back a little bit and give some privacy to the students.
It may be that the results of this motion will give direction as to whether the board is ready to act on it tonight, and if they're not, well, then I think some direction would be appropriate. But right now, the motion only is on whether we should postpone action on this item. So commentary, please, only on the postponement. Mrs. Iaccona and then Mrs. Brand.
Through the chair to Mrs. Cannelli. Was your policy committee unanimous in adopting this?
Yes, we were.
I will not support this motion.
Mrs. Brand.
I actually was at the policy committee. There was a member of the community that also attended and, quite frankly, raised some doubts for me. I know the policy committee has gone through all the motions, but I will be supporting the motion. I still think this is one of the most challenging pieces we have, and I think the intentions are good. I think we're off to a good start, but I don't think we're there yet. And anyone that's willing to give us a perspective that will help us through this, that could help us smooth the way so we don't entertain any other risks moving forward, I think would be all the better, and I'm all for it.
And we have two different views expressed. Is there any further comment before we take action? Mr. Lu.
Just to be clear, this representative from the ACLU is not here or would not be writing policy. In fact, that's the farthest thing that he would be doing. He doesn't want to do that, and he can't. He wants to offer up suggestions of help. One of the words he used was, is that we're very brave in going forward into this uncharted territory. And so I found that his comments, after reading this public document, so it wasn't anything sneaky behind closed doors, was a way of saying, hey, this is the area that we have expertise in. Can I lend you some support? Because he was very supportive that we wanted to go down this road, even though many schools have not done this yet. My feeling is, if this is uncharted territory, why not get the expertise from the people who deal with this all the time? I don't see how it could hurt.
If there are no further opinions on the motion to postpone, then I will ask, go to the public to see if there are any viewpoints on the motion to postpone, not the underlying main motion, but the issue of whether this should be postponed or not, the student internet policy. policy. I don't see anybody coming forward too quickly. So we're back to the board for action on the motion to postpone. Are you ready to vote? It's a yes. All in favor of postponing consideration of this policy and remanding it back to the Policy Committee, raise your hand. Mr. Lou, Mrs. Brand. All those opposed? Mrs. Connolly, Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Gerber, Philip Dwyer, Mrs. Iacona, Mr. Fattabene, and Mr. Carey. The motion fails 2 to 7. So we're back to the main motion. Any further comments on the main motion? To adopt the internet policy. Mrs. Connolly.
It would be remiss of me not to take this opportunity with a fairly large audience to make sure that they're a little bit familiar with what we're talking about here, since it very well may affect some of your children. And it's the idea that after our first iteration of this policy, we're back with a second draft in which we distinctly separate the rules as they apply to the district technology resources, the equipment owned by the school. And what we've had to deal with is the issue of the personally-owned, the personal electronic devices, and that there needs to be a policy in place and, most importantly, guidance given to faculty and staff regarding what to do in the event of having reasonable suspicion that there is, the student is engaged in an activity that could be upwards of illegal or at very least against school rules. And so this policy, why it's so controversial, is because there isn't other policy of this nature. We go normally for guidance for policy like this to CAEB. There is no policy out there that has been tested in the manner that Mr. Lou has described. I mean, he is right to have reservations about it, but we are embarking on an era of students using their own devices, and teachers and staff need the guidance. And it's for that reason that I ask for the board's support. The Policy Committee has gone and had extensive time with the board council, and, you know, I think at this point, we all feel quite secure with it. I mean, Mr. Fattabene is right. We go, this is, I feel quite comfortable that this is constitutional. I also say, as a teacher, that I think it needs to be every bit as aggressive as this is stated. Having been in a classroom and having to deal with this, this is spelled out fairly well, and I think it gives fairly comprehensive guidance, even as certain aspects of it are vague, as Mr. Lou points out, but there has to be some latitude granted. Sometimes we'll be talking about a classroom situation, and other times it could be a field trip. And the wording allows for latitude in either way there in terms of guiding staff. So again, I would ask for the board's support.
Thank you. We'll go to the public and then come back to the board for any other debate or action. On the main motion of adopting the internet policy, the student internet policy, do we have comments from the public? I see somebody walking down. Please state your name, and I remind you that we still have the two-minute rule. Thank you.
No problem. Suzanne Meska, 123 Rygate Road. I think the one thing I want to point out on this internet policy is, while I appreciate all the work that's been done by the Policy Committee, we, as parents in this room, have already signed that original draft of the internet policy, as it was handed out by the administration in September at Open House, as the only means for your child to use the computers in the schools. So this is where it becomes a little interesting as a parent, while I appreciate the many hours this obviously has taken. It would have been interesting to not have the administration provide the document that you are constantly in discussion on prior to it being adopted by the Board of Ed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, back to the board. Any final comments from the board before action is taken? Are you ready to vote? All in favor of the internet policy as presented, raise your hand. Mrs. Connolly, Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iacona, Mr. Fattabene, Mr. Carey. All opposed? Mr. Lou, Mrs. Brand. The motion passes 7 to 2. There are two other related internet policies, and so I would ask Mrs. Connolly to introduce the next one.
Implosure number four.
Let me put the motion on the table. Second reading of policy number 5335, Students-Student Internet Use. Recommended motion that the Board of Education delete policy 5335, Students-Student Internet Use. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Connolly, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Proceed.
This is, policy is simply a redundancy within our vast policy book, that we had two student internet uses appearing in there, and to avoid this type of redundancy, we were looking to delete this policy, which comes under code of behavior.
Any questions on the motion? No questions on the motion? Any comments from the public on this, deleting this policy because we just passed the other policy? No questions from the public. Back to the board, ready to vote. All in favor, raise your hand. I have a unanimous vote. So that's the second reading of policy 5335 is completed. We now have the third policy, second reading of policy 4235, Personnel-Electronic Monitoring. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve policy 4235, Personnel-Electronic Monitoring. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Connolly? Mrs. Gerber? Mrs. Connolly?
This policy is to serve notice to faculty and staff, and basically what this, what this, these edits are intended to do is to serve notice to the faculty of the practices that we are in the process of implementing or already, such as video surveillance on all school transportation vehicles. So this is trying to bring everything up to date, again, as notice to staff.
Any questions on this policy? No questions from the board? If I go to the public on comments on second reading of policy 4235, Personnel-Electronic Monitoring, are there any questions from the public? Hearing none and seeing none, we'll go back to the board for vote. All in favor of the recommended motion concerning policy 4235, raise your hands. I have Mrs. Connolly, Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iacona, Mr. Fattabene, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Brand. All those opposed? Mr. Lou. The motion passes 8 to 1. Adoption of the recommended budget for 2013, 2014. As I indicated at the beginning, I will delay putting, asking for a motion to be put on the table. There are a variety of ideas out there, and I'd like to have board discussion, help fashion what the actual motion will be, rather than go through the process of putting a main motion on and then treating all 31 ideas as amendments, because, quite frankly, for the members of the public, that would require us to each amendment, go to the public for comment, and then come back. And you would have had to bring your breakfast with you if we went through that process. What I'm hoping to accomplish by this discussion process is that the public will be fully informed of what the board is actually ready to act on, rather than all of the ideas that are out there. So in the, in front of you, there was some additional information that has been requested at different times by different board members. A pamphlet on the Gifted Education Program, a guide to understanding the identification process, is in front of you. A position paper opposing the substitution waiver and exemptions required for physical education that speaks to one of the comments that one board member made. There is a document about kindergarten priorities in terms of how the schedule looks if we did go to full-time kindergarten. And I believe that this is a document that you've received before, which is a report on the DRGB schools' gifted programs with additional responses coming back from different school districts. So I think that is in front of you as well. It's a sheet that looks like this. And then finally, for your general information and knowledge, a list of the major district-wide initiatives that had been established for 2012, 13, just so to be aware of it. And finally, the document that we will be using as our prime discussion document for the budget is in front of you, which is a three-page document. And I'll ask Dr. Tittle to comment on how he structured the document.
Okay, thank you. At the last meeting, as Mr. Dwyer went around and sort of got a sense of where the board members were with this budget, it was clear to me that a majority of the board was interested in reducing this budget by varying amounts of money. I think the lowest figure I heard from anybody was about $500,000, and I heard upwards of a million and a half. Some people even talked about maybe $2 million. Obviously, I'd just given you my recommended motion, so I'm really not in favor of cutting But what I did was, I had suggested that there might be some ideas of where we could scale some things back without impacting programs and services, and that I would go through as many of the board options as requested, try to cost them out, and see where we landed in terms of total dollars. It's an extensive exercise to go through, because if you make a mistake and you come up with a figure that then lands in the budget and it turns out to be off, then we're really in trouble. And so on the first page, what you've got are four suggestions that were made, that either we can't determine what the savings would be, or the savings look like it could be minimal, and I just couldn't put my faith behind any estimate, or, in some cases, items that were suggested would, in fact, as we examined them, cost us money. So that's what's on the first page. The flip side is what I've titled, "The Minimum Board of Ed Requested Reductions." In other words, not everybody, I should point out, not everybody was saying, cut at least $500,000, but certainly quite a few people were at least in that neighborhood. So most of these, I mean, I don't know if all of these or some of these were even talked about at the meeting, but they come to $520,456. They include a project we've been working on this year. It's actually one of the initiatives, which, as some people have talked about, increasing instructional time is one of the goals of all this anyways. With 85% of our families choosing full-day kindergarten, the expenses of maintaining the extended day option are $157,000 with transportation costs. And so if we implemented full-day kindergarten as the only option for families, there would be no increase in the FTEs, because we have full-time teachers there. No additional special area teachers would be required. We would save the $157,000. So that's actually more instructional time and saves money. And I've got some additional, I mean, we have some people here can answer questions about it if you want to dig into that. The others are listed there in terms of what those reductions are. So that's the sort of the, I would call the base or the minimum that most people seem to be interested in. You know, we were hoping to add the part-time staff to cover the library media center and the computer labs at the high school, to add that back in from the cut from two years ago. But obviously, if we're talking about reducing services, then trying to add things back, you know, may not make a lot of sense. So that's what that page is. Then the, the third page is Additional Board of Ed Requested Reductions. And some of them were fairly open-ended, like, can we look at cutting back on X or Y or Z? And so there's multiple options within there. And this, as it turns out, I will tell you right now that there is nothing on this list I'm recommending. I just want to be clear. I've gotten plenty of emails saying, how can you be cutting music? I want to make it clear. I am not recommending these for a variety of reasons. But I also understand that the board asked for this, and the board may feel a need to make reductions, and so I have worked with the staff to do our due diligence on all of these areas. Then this comes to about $1,008,000. So that's sort of the shopping list, so to speak. And that's what that page is. Because I had said that I would cost them out even if I were not, you know, in favor of them. Then it got to a certain point where there was no point going further. We were well beyond, I mean, these reductions plus the first page is well over $2 million. So I figured I'd gone way beyond the call of duty, and we basically ran out of time. So that's an overview of the three pages.
There are probably two different views of overarching about whether we should not be looking at any program cuts and whether there's affordability issues in town that we need to take into account. And so I wonder if Mr. Lou and Mr. Carey might want to take 45 seconds or a minute at the most each to kind of express that's the conundrum we find ourselves in, if you will. And Mr. Lou, do you want to take that time or not?
I certainly do. The Chair's indulgence, I printed out some things. If you could pass this down. There are some back there as well. I'll read it quickly. Before we start to decimate our fine educational system, everyone needs to understand that the major increase in our budget this year is an insurance anomaly. At the same time, this does not mean that this Board of Education shouldn't scrutinize its budget and take responsibility for its continuing spiral costs, spiraling costs. $10,000 superintendent bonus 2011. $600,000 plus additional bus transportation due to medical school feeder plan, 2011. $5,200, 2% superintendent's raise after being hired for two years.
Mr. Lou, I wonder if I-
I need to quickly just go through this. It won't take me too long.
No, but I mean, I need to remind you to not get too close to the personnel.
Oh, no, no. I say here in the next paragraph, as you will see, well, anyway, you'll see that list. $12,500 superintendent's bonus, $10,000 superintendent's bonus moved to non-taxable annuity for the contract of his life, and $118,000 for new busing to the preschool Dwight. What I say next is I want to be clear that this list is not about Dr. Tittle's performance. It is about the Fairfield Board of Education. It goes to show that this board members, our spending's actions set the financial tone for the central office, for the staff, for the administration, and the district. These items have contributed to growing our budget, but they will have very little impact in our children's education. Music, world languages, sports, and guidance counselors are programs that have direct impact on our children's well-rounded education. What college admits students on the three Rs alone? They don't. Colleges, trade schools, employers want well-rounded students. So why are educational programs the first on the chopping block? Why is it every year at budget time we see salaries going up, bonuses distributed, but educational programs get cut? This is backwards to maintaining and growing a competitive educational district. Given that pensions and salaries are the next biggest drivers on the superintendent's list, and I'm happy to see some of them here tonight, shouldn't we examine cuts to central office, administration, secretarial, clerical positions, consolidate and reduce? And again, this is no reflection on performance. These cuts save us now and in the future. Shouldn't we be considering this first before we cut educational programs? The Board of Education must take responsibility for its spending. Thoughtful planning and prioritizing to maintain quality education for our children is paramount. Going forward, we are going to need to rethink and reconfigure how we are going to manage our school district, how it does business while not sacrificing educational programs. We need to be smart with our precious money that has been given to us to make sure that it is spent in the places that will do the most for our children, educational programs.
If I could ask for your indulgence. I suspect that we have people in the audience as well who are concerned about the affordability of town, and I don't think it is helpful to the board's process if we are in an applause meter contest. So while I appreciate some of you might fully support comments that board members make, if I could indulge on you to politely listen and not break out into applause at every comment. Thank you. Mr. Carey, you have also a view about the affordability in town that kind of frames the issue. Do you have any comment that you'd like to make?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Interestingly, I'm not sure I agree with the propriety of all of Mr. Lou's examples, but I don't think we're very far apart in what we want to accomplish. I notice that we want to spend in the places that'll do the most for our children, and I agree, and that's what I think this debate is about. The challenge is that, as a community, for the last 10 years, our spending on this board has grown at a compounded annual growth rate of 4.8%. has grown at a compounded annual growth rate of 4.8 percent for 10 years. And if we continue on that path for the next 40 years, in 20 years, you'll see a growth in your taxes of 2.4 times what they are now. In 30 years, 3.7 times what they are now. And in 40 years, 5.8 times what they are now. And I venture to say there are very few people sitting in this room who can afford six times the taxes they're paying. So, my idea, and what I think that we have to do as a board, so that we will be able to have a better conversation with the other boards in this town on behalf of our children, is that we really have to set up a financial framework where we have an understanding of what reasonable is, and we agree and discuss. And I think that discussion has to extend beyond this board. What is affordable for the taxpayers in this town? And we work our way backwards, as opposed to continually working our way forwards with every need that we have, and not considering the affordability of those needs. I think we'll be much better served if we know what the ceiling is, and then look at our programs and see what best serves our students. And that's really what the discussion has been about, nothing more than that. And it's my hope that we can look at this from a perspective where, as opposed to where we've been, we move forward in a manner where we step down to an area that's reasonable. There are huge crushing liabilities that this town faces that we have to recognize as a board, significantly more than what we are asking for. And we will be impacted by this. Our choice is to ignore that and ask for everything we want, or to be cognizant of it and be a partner with the town to find a way to do the best that we can for our students while doing it in a way that's affordable for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. I remind the board that one of the five goals that we established was to take a review of our budgeting development and approval process, and that we've scheduled this spring, summer, to engage in that. And I think a couple of the ideas expressed on both sides as to where we should be going so that there are some budgeting principles could be part of that discussion. Tonight, we have a responsibility to address this year's budget, and so I would like to have the debate or the discussion focused on this year's budget, not the long-range affordability question, although as important as it is, we do have issues. I'd like to kind of talk about the process and remind you again, but Mrs. Brand, did you have a 60-second comment?
We actually are the Board of Education, so our top priority has to be education because that is our charge. As a result, I really would like us to see, moving forward, to do a five-year educational plan with estimates of what that might look like financially. The reason I feel this way is that, again, it's very comparable to what we did with our facility plan. We might have issues that might come up that might cause us to break it or modify it every year, but I think then the community has a better idea of what our expectations are and what our goals are and how we're trying to move forward.
And I think that's a subject that would be a perfect subject for this spring in terms of going after something like that. If I may move on. Please do, but then I'll call that an end and we'll go through the process of this year's budget.
And I appreciate your desire to move on, Mr. Chair. I think that one of the things that we want to look at, and I'd be more than willing to do that after we get through the budget process, Mrs. Brand has an idea and approach of how to approach this. I've made it fairly public that I'm hoping that we could agree on a sense of a body, 4 percent, 3 percent, 2 percent over the next three years to get us to a 2 percent level. Perhaps after we discuss the budget this evening, we could have a brief discussion on possibly melding those two ideas, because I think it is important that we walk away from this board tonight, sending a message to the rest of the town bodies what our intent is moving forward beyond this particular budget.
Any board member can bring up any subject and open board comments, so I'll defer any further comment on this subject till after we finish our agenda. Let me refer your attention to the document that's in front of you that Dr. Title reviewed. For a process point of view, he has identified four of the ideas that were laid out at the last meeting as not contributing to a reduction of the budget. And so, while these ideas may require and deserve further study for the purpose of addressing this year's budget, these ideas do not seem to be on the table. And so, I wanted to first confirm with board members whether they agree with that assessment and that, yes, we can talk about this later, but they're not able to be used for this year's budget. Mrs. Brand, and then Mr. Carey. Let me broaden that so that, and then the next second step, if you will, once we agree on page one, would be to say, is page two, as Dr. Title presented it, should we adopt page two as the base? And have discussion from board members as to whether there's an idea on that, that they don't like on that page and should be moved off, or whether that base is good enough. And once we have come to, I'll say, some consensus on the base, then I would move to page three and again, ask board members whether there are ideas on page three that they would like to recommend be brought onto and added to the base, so that through discussion and consensus, we'll know where we are going to be. And I think Mrs. Moncel was going to be the scorekeeper. So she will keep track of the discussion relative to where if we find a majority of the board seems to be going down this path, she'll keep the, you know, pluses and minuses there so that we'll know where we are at the end of the meeting. So that's the process. Any questions on the process before I move on to the comment? Mrs. Iacono.
I'm sorry, and I do appreciate you trying to get this to move along, but we're not following Robert's rules, so I'm just a little bit confused. Number one, if procedurally, we're supposed to suspend the rules. And number two, are we supposed to, in a block, for example, reduce the second page and then have a discussion on if we want to take anything out? I just, I'm not following how you want to do this.
I don't think Robert's rules prevent a body from talking about an issue that is important to them and helping to formulate that issue prior to making a motion. So I think it is, my ruling would be that it is an acceptable process.
Okay.
And so, I would take it one step at a time. Page one, we agreed that these are issues important to talk about, but not in tonight's budget, and we move off of them. And then page two, what will the base be? And then page three, what do we want to move on to the base based on individual members? Every issue will be talked about tonight, and just if a majority of the board members want to move that issue on or off, then that's how we'll fashion the motion.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Relative to page one, since we're, as board members, getting this at the table, I'm looking at this for the first time and reading the part with curriculum leaders, actually about three times, and to be very frank with you, I'm flabbergasted. How we can go from six full-time folks and have it actually drop them down, I understand the process in terms of administrators going to a teacher level, the process is that there's a decrease over time in terms of salary. I'm assuming that there is not a decrease because I know the benefits for administrators and the benefits for teachers are different. The benefits for teachers, they pay more in than the administrators do, so there would be some savings there. I'll be very frank, I'm flabbergasted that there isn't any cost savings with this. I don't think I can overstate that. If it's not going to be for consideration, I really am at a disadvantage because there's not much I can do with this, but I can honestly tell you, this shocks me.
Want me to try to explain it?
Please do.
Right, because the, and really, this focuses on the secondary curriculum leader positions, of which there are four. And the model that you simply eliminate those positions on the first page.
Page one. Oh, within the budget book.
There are six, but the two that service the elementary level, I didn't think they were even part of the conversation. I think they're critical, and I don't think we, all the discussion about curriculum leader positions have been about secondary. And if you move from a curriculum leader who's in charge of the grade 6 to 12 program, it's got to be replaced with department chairs. Someone has to pick that work up. And, you know, there's probably not a high school around that doesn't have department heads and they're given release time to do that work. So we would have to substitute department chairs who do some teaching and some of the administrative work for the curriculum leaders, and you'd need to do something for the middle school as well. And the curriculum leaders have protection in their contract for a loss of pay if they're moved into teaching positions or lower-ranking positions. So, in fact, you'd end up paying more in the first year to make this happen because you'd need to pay for the teaching positions that would no longer be covered, and you'd have to continue to pay these salaries. So that's how it plays out. The work would still need to be done, and at the same time, I think it's a less effective system because you'd have no one coordinating across the schools and the levels. So, on top of the fact that, you know, on the substance of it, the work that has to be done, many of the initiatives we have in place require curriculum coordination. But the fact is that if you replace them with department chairs, which is the customary way it's done in districts, then in fact, this costs you money.
Mrs. Cannelli.
Just one quick comment that I would object to in what Dr. Title says. I understand the math of what you're saying, but I think we have an extremely capable, from my brief impressions of her, but an extremely capable secondary ed curriculum, I mean, secondary ed coordinator. Dr. Boyce, I would assume that would be, her job would be the coordinating of those department chairs. So, the final sentence of this, I wouldn't agree with. We have somebody exactly in place to fulfill that job. That said--
Well, except that that's on the list to be cut, too.
I don't agree with that. So, but on a different matter, I mean, I think this is, as a topic, though, this is something we're going to need to push across in terms of, if not for this budget cycle, then for next year, because of the teacher and the administrative evaluation, I think there's going to have to be an overall administrative audit evaluation for how this is going to be implemented. So even if it doesn't happen now, it's going to be a big issue next year.
Comments from other board members? If I can get everybody's comment in first before we go to a second round for somebody. Relative to the question is, this is the analysis, does that mean that these don't contribute to net reduction? So we'll put that off for further conversation. Mr. Carey, and then Mr. Lou.
My question was on a different bullet, Mr. Chair, so I'd be happy to defer--
Well, no, on all four? On that page? Any comment on that?
Yeah, my question on extended day kindergarten, just to make sure I'm clear. We received an audit report that indicated and recommended to go to extended day, not full-day kindergarten from an auditor, and it indicated savings. The chair, Dr. Title, or any of your team, is the delta here, the transportation, why are we seeing a cost increase now when our auditor told us it would be a cost decrease?
Because they overstated the savings from the special areas, and they didn't consider the transportation costs.
Okay. Mr., who was next? Mr. Lou, will you raise your hand?
Yes, thank you. In regard to the curriculum leaders, you know, your first attempt, I understand what you're trying to do here, but the only way we can really look at this to see how it saves, and not necessarily just this year, but going forward, because our biggest problem, our drivers, our salaries and pensions, is to see the actual numbers on how it works for the first year, how it works for the second year, how it works for the third year, to see if by, let's say, year four, we're actually having a savings. Because I understand that at first that you won't see a difference, but if we do see a difference over the years, that needs to be taken into account. So I'd like to request that we see, even if it doesn't come for this budget, but I think by the next meeting, we should definitely see some kind of breakdown in numbers, please.
I don't know that I could commit by the next meeting, but I do--
Oh, I mean--
But I do commit that these are four ideas that we won't let drop unless somebody who proposed it, like physical education waivers, if Mrs. Cannelli says upon further reflection, I'm good with it, well, then it won't keep going forward. But if those individuals who have an interest in it, then we'll make sure that as part of the spring discussion or whatever, we include this in terms of how to develop a budget in the future.
I would reiterate, I'm definitely still interested in pursuing it.
Any other comments on page one in terms of having these be part of the discussion or not? I see none. I have one last comment. Yep.
Yeah, first of all, we actually got a note from the deputy superintendent that basically, as part of it, we were copied in on it, that spoke to the people that are best qualified to write curriculum are the teachers. They're in the trenches, they know the expectations, they know the standards, they know the skill set, and to me, that's what I've understood curriculum leaders to do besides coordinating, and actually, the bulk of the work is done by the teachers at present. In addition, I was aware that, at least told, that a lot of curriculum leaders do not evaluate teachers. It is actually the administrators on site that do that. So how much of an impact we have, again, as I said before, I'm at a disadvantage. I am very surprised. I did ask for six, not just the upper. I do think, not just short-term, I do think we would have seen a small reduction, not great, but what my primary concern with what I was looking at is head count. The head count is what is impacting our overall costs because we are carrying those salaries and we are carrying pensions and their benefits. I want to make sure that what we're delivering when we move forward, every dollar as much as possible, is hitting a kid in a classroom, as opposed to really on the operating side. So that was where I was going with this. Clearly, it's not moving anywhere, but to say that I'm disappointed would be an understatement.
Can I correct a couple of factual things there?
Please do.
Number one, these individuals do evaluate first and second-year teachers, so they are part of the administrative unit that does evaluate teachers. They don't evaluate all teachers. And number two, they're all certified positions, and therefore, their pensions are covered by teachers' retirement.
Absent hearing to the contrary, I think we're about ready to say this page is for future discussion, and we can move on to the next, but Mrs. Iacono.
Just through the chair, Dr. Title, the teacher evaluations that are coming through, if you were to move to that type of system, would that put you at a disadvantage for the number of staff you'd have available to evaluate those teachers? In other words, you've mentioned in the past that it's been, that we're extremely concerned about how we're going to get all these evaluations done. If you were to move to this structure, would that make that even that much more difficult? Because you'd have--
Yes.
--less people to be able to do it?
Right, because as it's structured there, because we're looking to keep administrators down, it was the goal, the people, as those positions are constructed, are all in the teacher bargaining unit because they're teaching more than 50% of the time. So it would hurt us in having fewer people to conduct evaluations across the district. Quite frankly, I think going forward, all the curriculum leaders are going to take on possibly a bigger role in teacher evaluation. They're the best qualified to do it in some regards because they've got the content area expertise at the upper levels that some of the other administrators may not have. So I think, you know, as evaluations become higher and higher stakes, I think the role is going to become even more critical, not less critical. And for a whole host of other reasons, people can look back at the history of what happened to curriculum in this district and what that impact was on children and what the education they got when there were no curriculum leaders. And that's been cited in NASDAQ studies and NEASQ studies, rather, in which everything was disjointed, not coordinated, and the education the child got varied tremendously from classroom to classroom where there was no coordination. So this school system does know what it's like when you don't have it, but on the point of evaluations, we would be in a tremendously more difficult position than we're already going to be in without them.
I just want to state then, because, and one of the reasons why I want to be so clear on it, even though we're going to take it off the table, it seems, is this is something that we consistently hear as we move through the town bodies, why don't you get rid of the curriculum leaders, why don't you get here, rid of the curriculum leaders? And one of the things that I've been trying to explain to people is that we are facing mandates that are coming down from the state and federal level that, in this particular instance, make it very difficult to eliminate people that we need to do a job that we're being told we absolutely have to do. We don't have a choice about it. So, thank you.
So, for the members of the public who are following along on your sheets, I would say that if you came because you were wondering about the extended day kindergarten or the reduction of world language in the high schools, or the idea of waivers at physical education, or curriculum leaders at the central office, that for purposes of adopting the budget right now, those are off the table, no board can bind the action of a future board. And so, I suspect, since the topic of how much you spend on administration is a topic that is within school districts, it's within not-for-profits, it's within corporations-- that is within school districts, it's within not-for-profits, it's within corporations, that I suspect that this issue will come back each budget year. But for right now, we're moving on, those will not be considered as part of our budget reductions. Page two has, six ideas that were costed out. Full day kindergarten, increase the parking fees, eliminate the clerical positions that we had hoped to add back in to cover the library, media center, and computer labs that were taken out in a prior budget adjustment to declare that policy is that the food service budget, which is adopted in June, shall fully fund its share of costs, and therefore the pension costs will be added to that, which in all likelihood will result in some lunch price increases. And then to increase the custodial fees for the reservations of the community use of school buildings, and then to reduce some of the capital requests in the area of technology. This would be considered, as Dr. Title said, the base, and so I would welcome board comment as to whether they're ready to adopt this as a base. Again, not with a motion, but to say in general, by consensus, we seem to be okay with this, or if there is an item on here that you would like to be, have removed. So, comments from the board. Mr. Convetito.
Couple of comments. Full day kindergarten seems to be something that we've been moving towards for a number of years, so I'll leave that to other members of the board. Increase parking fees in the high school. When the parking fees were introduced two years ago, it was my understanding that the level at which they were introduced covered the additional costs of the security guards and that differential cost to the system. Does this additional fee go beyond what those incremental costs are?
When we, excuse me, when we first put this in as part of the budget cut in 2011, we had anticipated that we would get $50,000 in revenue and perhaps spend $10,000 in additional enforcement costs for a net of 40. And this increase would not require any additional enforcement costs. We have people doing it now. In fact, I think our enforcement costs are actually relatively low, so this is pure revenue. There would not be any additional costs associated with this.
So, we're basically using our high school juniors and seniors as a revenue base?
If I can comment?
No.
Okay.
I think, I think, I think the silence, okay, and I'm not criticizing one way or the other.
Right, it's additional revenue.
Got it. Food service pension subsidiary, this is simply moving back that pension increase back into the standalone budget for the food service department?
Correct.
Okay. Custodial fees, $10,000, and that's just a 10% increase for the organizations that use the facility that are currently paid, there's no change in policy at that point?
No, but we would, we'd be looking to see in discussions with the first selectmen if there's some exempt organizations. This would assume that we could move a few groups over to the pay category.
Okay.
This 10% wouldn't quite get us $10,000. We just don't know how optimistic we can be about that. I didn't want to overstate it.
Capital equipment, the server at Fairfield Low School, I think this is the second year it's been on the capital equipment list?
I don't know. Nancy is here, I'm going to come up. This, just so you know where this figure came from, there was a substantial increase in capital equipment this year compared to last year in terms of total dollars. Some of that was due to the fact that we moved some money from a maintenance and repair account into this line. This basically represents the difference in terms of total dollars. So, Nancy, can you answer the question about the Ludlow server?
Right, the ward server has been replaced this year. This was part of a three-year plan. We did some consolidation of elementary servers over the last couple of years, and then this year was handling wards, and our plan was to do Ludlow's next year, and we chose to defer it.
And the replace, again, through the Chair, the replacement of the 99 desktop computers at the elementary schools, what's the approximate age of the current computers at the elementary schools?
Next year, they'll be seven years old.
Seven years.
Right. But we do have that other elementary initiative, which is why we thought we could get away with it.
Okay, thank you. Since it seems to be traditional for this board to pontificate, I'm going to pontificate.
Thank you.
I was elected to this board, and I take responsibility seriously to put forth the best possible program that we can put forth, okay? If town bodies and the town itself do not want to step up to that, okay, and do that, then that's okay. That's part of the process, and I'm willing to go through that process, okay? And with all deference to the Chair, okay, and the process that you've laid out, I hereby put a motion on the board on the floor that this board approve a budget of $156,171,651 less the cost of the full day kindergarten, the 19.5 clerical positions, and the food pension reserves subsidiary.
Again, thank you, thank you. In deference to the process, but in deference to each individual member has the right to make a motion if it is properly worded and all the rest, so I will accept that motion. I assume that the $156 million number that you exactly read out is the amount of Dr. Title's recommended budget. And so, therefore, the reduction would be the $157,000, the $23,346, and the $50,000, correct?
I'm sorry, the $10,000 for custodial.
And the $10,000 for custodial fees. Those four numbers, so while I wait quickly for Doreen to give me a real number, could you speak up?
$240,346 would be the cut.
That would be the number of the reductions, but what would be the proper number to put in as the adopted budget? Because the motion should have the budget that John is aiming at. So, it would be the 150-something minus those four numbers, if you'll have patience with us as a public. Let me get a number here. And so, the motion that is the recommended motion would have that number in it, and that would be in recognition that we are adopting the full day kindergarten, we are not funding the 19.5 clerical positions, we are shifting the $50,000 of food service pension cost over to the food service budget, and we are not counting on the reservations custodial fees. So, that is what the motion is. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'm confused, could you just say that again, please? I'm trying to follow what we're keeping and what we're not keeping.
Okay, let me repeat.
No, it's okay.
No, no, I'll repeat the motion, but I, but we won't be discussing it unless there is a second. So, if somebody wishes to second it, then we can.
I just want to know what we're moving or not moving on.
Yeah. The recommended motion that has historically been passed on the approval of the budget is that a budget recommendation in the amount of $155,931 and $305 be approved and forwarded to the Board of Finance for its consideration in the preparation of the town budget for the 2013-2014 fiscal year. Further, that the Superintendent be authorized to distribute the set amount in a manner agreed to by the board at this meeting. And the four areas where the budget will be changed, and we're authorizing the Superintendent to go into the budget book and make the changes on the line items that would be required to implement these four decisions, is that one, we would implement full day kindergarten at a savings of $157,000, that we would not fund, as originally proposed in this year's, next year's budget, the 19.5 clerical positions at the high school.
Hour, nineteen and a half hour.
Nineteen and a half hour, yes, right, sorry. That we would move the pension cost for the food service workers over to the food service budget rather than carry it within the operating budget, and that we would not count on getting an additional $10,000 of custodial fees based on increasing fees and some changes perhaps in the first selectmen's list of exempt organizations. Those would be the four items that would be required to be implemented in order to arrive at the $155,931,305. So, does that clarify it or further confusion?
Yeah, can I, can I?
If it's custodial fees, we're not increasing or we are increasing? Because this shows.
We are not increasing.
We are going to stay where we are? I'm just trying to.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, can I just again ask a procedural question? Because this is really confusing.
We are clarifying what the motion is so that people know what the motion is and whether there is somebody that wants to second it. Mr. Convetito, have I confused what you meant by the custodial?
No, I included the custodial fees at a savings of $10,000.
You did too.
Yes.
Okay. Right? Is that included in your tally?
Okay, so then I've confused that, so the, we will, we will increase the fees by 10%. My apologies for confusing that statement.
If I may just have a point, I make the motion based on the fact that I think this discussion is highly premature. We have an insurance contract that's out to bid, we don't know what the savings are going to be on that, and I think to go beyond and cut programming.
Can I ask you to hold debate until we get a second for the motion? That's the motion, Mrs. Cannelli has moved and seconded it. The maker of the motion has the floor to make an argument for the motion.
Yeah, my argument for the motion is very simple. We're looking for $1.5 million in cuts, now we're looking for $1.25. We do not know what this insurance bid is going to come in at, we won't know that until end of February, early March, is that correct? Okay? So, to make cuts to programming and services that we provide, again, believe that's premature at this point in time. By the time this budget process rolls through the town boards, we'll know where we stand and we have a better place and starting ground to go from. And I think to start making cuts to programming and arts and music and gifted programs is, these are draconian cuts that serve no purpose at this point in the discussion.
Thank you. Mrs. Cannelli, you, no, you're getting better, you're getting better, thank you. Mrs. Cannelli.
The only point of this that I'd actually disagree with Mr. Convetito on is that I think those 19.5 clerical positions in the two high schools are really important. Though both administrations have spoken very clearly to the Superintendent, both administrations have spoken very clearly to the Superintendent that that is having an academic impact on the students in terms of access to this equipment, so I just point that out there as a point of discussion, I'm not sure whether to make, suggest a friendly amendment or not, I'd like to propose a friendly amendment, that that be added back in, the $23,346.
Friendly amendment is not opposed.
So, can you quickly do that math so that we have the new number so that we can?
Can I make sure people know, these are not 19 and a half positions?
Yes. I misspoke.
Okay, this is in our haste. There's the equivalent of one FTE, each is 19 and a half hours per position, one per high school. That equates to one FTE, it's like a half in each school. That's the, it should say 19 and a half hour clerical.
So, with the board's approval, the friendly amendment is accepted? And so, the number that would now be in there? $651, $155,954,651, is that correct?
Correct.
Mrs. Brand, you had a comment?
Yeah, just a question through the Chair, Dr. Title. It was my understanding in the past that we had paraprofessionals that were covering that, actually not clerical. And I was surprised to actually see this listed as clerical. I, quite frankly, I want a warm body in there, I agree with Mrs. Cannelli, I think it's extremely important, but I'm just confused as to what body satisfies this need.
We want more than warm. We want effective. Clerical is a catch-all term that we use. We use the term clerical, for example, in some places it refers to people that are doing payroll or benefits and this sort of thing. So, these are potentially, I would say, similar in some ways to paraprofessional positions. We're looking for people that can do the skill set, some of the skills, you know, in the library, maybe more secretarial and clerical in nature in that you're there to keep the library open for the two days after school. We also would need somebody who perhaps has a little computer savvy to do the computer lab work. So, it's sort of a combination of skills that we would write a little job description for and recruit, but the clerical is sort of a generic term that we use, and the pay scale is the same regardless of what we called it, para-clerical, secretarial, once it's in that 19 and a half hour bucket, that's the pay rate.
I just checked with our English teacher as to whether I've used double negatives to confuse people, and so I've asked Mr. Convetito if he would clearly state which of these items he is expecting to be part of our program next year and therefore included in the budget and which ones are not, so that everybody is clear.
The proposed motion is that the board approve a 2013-14 budget amount in the amount of $156,171,651 less the following items. Full day kindergarten at $157,000, food service, as amended by the friendly amendment, food service pension fund subsidiary, $50,000, reservation custodial fees, $10,000.
Those three items.
Those three items.
So, we increase fees 10%, we will move the pension subsidy over, and we will implement full day kindergarten. And the number that that arrives at, that Mrs. Muncell gave us was one, and so the number that will actually be in the motion will be the $155,954,651. Further comment on the motion, Mr. Liu?
Thank you. I can't support the food service pension subsidy. We've been working so hard in getting the food service to change and become a healthy food program. We've just spent money on it. To put this into their budget would, I think, decimate some of their budgets and what they're trying to do, and I think this is part of education as far as I'm concerned. So, I can't support it if we have that in there.
I won't speak for the food service, but I think the board has to be aware that in all likelihood, this will result in discussion about school lunch prices come June. It would be, I think Mr. Liu is correct, it would be hard-pressed to absorb this without some consideration to that. Mr., Mrs. Iacoma, and then Mr. Carey.
I will support the food service program absorbing its own pension increase. It was intended that that program would be a self-sustaining program. We've been subject to, again, federal and state mandates that have forced us to change some of our eating options so that children are no longer buying lunch and reducing our revenue, which is forcing us to then pass along a $50,000 nut into the regular budget. And I've got an issue with that. And I think that we need to move it back to where it needs to be in a self-sustaining budget. And if there's issues at budget time on the food service budget about how to cover those costs, we'll have to have a discussion about raising school lunch prices, and we need to have a serious discussion. I have said this repeatedly, that I believe in the healthy food service program, but I believe we can do it better than the state and the federal government telling us how to do it. So, I will support moving this back to that budget.
Thank you. Mrs. Brand, I'm sorry, I think I did say Mr. Carey was next and then Mrs. Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm concerned about this motion without getting into the specifics because, again, I want to reiterate, I think we need to have this discussion, and this motion takes us back in the direction that we've been, the path we've been following for the last 20, 30-plus years has gotten us here. I think it's important that we have the discussion and we find a way to manage our own house before it's managed for us. If the opinion of this board, majority of this board, is that they would prefer the other town bodies to manage our fiscal house for us completely, then I'll certainly respect that. But I think that we have an opportunity to do something here as a board to make the financial challenges that we're going to face more, I should say, less painful over time. But if we do not demonstrate as a body that we're willing to make the tough choices But if we do not demonstrate as a body that we're willing to make the tough choices that are before us, then I think that the overall impact downstream for this budget is going to be significantly worse. And I will ask my fellow board members to not support this motion so we can continue the discussion. If it is the will of this body that they don't want to make any of these changes, I can certainly respect that. But again, if we don't come away tonight with an understanding of how we're going to move forward and have some type of idea of, a discussion of a financial framework that we'll work from, I feel that the detriment to our budget will be far greater than if we take control of our own house.
Thank you. Board comment can continue or we can go to the public and get their viewpoints and then come back for further conversation, Mrs. Brand and then Mr. Fattabene.
I actually would like also to review some of the other options we have moving forward. I appreciate where Mr. Convertito is coming from. Again, my primary concern, as I said before, is headcount, not programs. I have no intention of cutting programs. That's the last place I want to go. Further, just for a point of information, if I'm not mistaken, over the last two years, I believe that food service has paid into the operating of the school district for custodial as well as utilities. So we actually have been taking from that fund. It isn't just as a result of any kind of programs that we're doing. It actually, I think, has a lot more to do, the fact that we've been charging them for the use.
Dr. Title?
Yes, that's correct. We, we've been carrying, in the current year budget and it's carried over to next year budget, $110,000 of chargebacks to the food service program for custodial costs associated and utilities. That's correct.
And Mr. Fattabene wanted to make a comment? Mike is more of a point of order. And see if I get, this is an amendment to the main motion, as I understand it. Is that true? No, this is the main motion. There was no, there was never a motion put on the table while we were having discussion. And then Mr. Convertito wanted to put a main motion on and we did the math necessary.
I understand that. But my point would have been that it, I'd certainly feel much more comfortable procedurally if one could do this as an amendment to the motion. It passes and then we can, before we vote on the main motion, add additional amendments where other members might want to have additional contributions, but at least we can agree on some and move forward. My concern is that if we don't agree with some and move forward, we're going to be here all night. So I would have procedurally liked to see it as an amendment to the main motion. Vote on that amendment. If it passes, then vote on the main motion, but entertain other amendments to that main motion in order to move forward in a procedural fashion.
I agree.
Mr. Convertito made it as a main motion, so I understand that you're a comment, but I can't change a main motion to something different because Mr. Convertito moved and it was seconded. So it is the main motion that we are acting on right now as stated.
Can I, just another point of order. I mean, I don't know if the mover and the seconder would reconsider their approach to this because there's some things that people want to move on and some things they don't want to move on. And I'm going to, you're kind of tying people's hands to have an individual opportunity to weigh in on things, the way you're structuring this. We've always done cuts line by line. I don't understand this group thing.
Yeah, there is a main motion on the floor. There is nothing that prevents an individual member from making an amendment to that main motion. So if an individual member wanted to look at items on, let's say, page three that you would want to have included as one of the budget reductions, individual members can of course make any amendment they want. So this does not foreclose the amendment process. It actually facilitates that, I think.
No, you're forcing people to vote against something that they might want to do.
Excuse me. Mrs. Cannelli.
I actually don't see it that way. I think what Mr. Convertito's motion is an acknowledgement of is Dr. Title's position that everything on page three, he is recommending against as a cut and that we as a board would be saying, we recognize the academic validity of having each of these in our budget, that each of these has some important impact that we need to have in our budget and that it would be premature to talk about cutting some of these out when we could be talking, I don't even know the range, Dr. Title, of what this cost savings could be with, as we're checking out with the health insurance. But everything on this page, on page three, that some individuals have been talking about and which has certainly brought a big crowd out tonight, they're all recommended to be in the budget, that Dr. Title supports having every single one of them. And to start picking here and there, I mean, we don't have a big picture of an amount that we want cut. It's, well, let's pick this one and let's pick that one. And that is what feels to be premature. That is a discussion that we could have later if there should be substantial cuts to the budget and once we know what the savings will be from the actions that we won't find out until the end of February. So I still completely agree with Mr. Convertito in this. I don't want to see anything lost from page three right now.
So we have a main motion on the floor. Mrs. Gerber.
I guess one thing that I feel might be helpful is just to, at the very least, and I'm not saying I particularly support anything on page three, but I think that we should at least have some explanation as to why specifically Dr. Title feels all of these things are not important. Because I think as this budget does move through the other town bodies, these questions will be asked. We've obviously gotten a lot of emails from a lot of people who have different opinions about what should and shouldn't be cut. A lot of those things are here. So I think, and I don't know if procedurally we could maybe vote on the motion then to discuss this or how exactly we want to do it, but I do think it's very important tonight, especially with as many people as have come out, to talk about these things because we may need to revisit many, if not all of them, in a few months. But at the very least, we'll know which one, why, how they all fit in the process, so.
Through the chair, you've asked Dr. Title a valid question and he can expand on his original comment about page three in response to your question.
I, you know, I'm in the same position as many of the folks are out here. I think that as you go through the ones that directly impact our programs, I think we will be going down the path of slowly unwinding what we have in this system that is very, very valuable. So, I also know, you know, we may not be able to do everything that we're, that we're doing, but if I had my choice, none of these things would get eliminated. I think that we made a reduction in, in the world language two years ago. And I think that it makes sense to start world language in the fourth grade. I think that, you know, music is certainly one of the, you know, highlights of our school system and has a lot of benefits. Well, there's a lot of different reductions in there that, you know, there's different options that were costed out, but obviously they'd all be detrimental to the music program. And I just can't, you know, in good conscience, support reductions to the music program. I think that, you know, the gifted program at the middle school, I think we made a, you know, a commitment to that when we implemented the program and we have a description of it in here. We made a commitment to improve that program for next year. And I think that's, you know, something that's important in here. I don't think that you want to reduce guidance counselors. First of all, it really makes the house system very, very difficult, but it increases the student counselor ratios. The, some of the ones that are not, you know, is sort of direct, direct programs. The clerical support that we just put in this year has been a godsend in terms of coverage. But now, it's even a greater concern. We're about to put in place buzzer systems with cameras, video, voice and so forth. It's absolutely critical that there's someone there to actually monitor that and answer that. And if there's only one person in the office to do it, it will not get done. Either it will be, they hear it and they just buzz people in and there's really no supervision there, or someone will have to wait at the door forever, waiting for the secretary to come back. So I think it's actually incredible blessing that we have that second person in the office all day long because it allows us to put the security in because we need somebody to monitor it. So I don't support that reduction. I'm, you know, I had put in previous years, you know, athletic participation fee on the table. I think that's something that, you know, is philosophically difficult to swallow. This fee would also impact middle school interscholastics as well as the, as well as the high schools. Obviously, if it gets to the point where you have to make a reduction, I think that thing might be, you know, back on the table because it doesn't actually cut something, but it will keep some kids from participating and cause a lot of aggravation. Actually, not in favor of cutting out your participation in Cabe, although obviously anybody can bring that up. They do give us an awful lot of help with our policies. In fact, we know that we have to review a policy because Cabe tells us. And without that, I think that's going to be very, very difficult. We'll also spend a lot more on legal services. They provide other services to us in terms of legal advice that we'd otherwise have to pay for. And I think there's something to a board of education supporting the only organization in the state that's looking out for the interest of school boards. And we know what damage can be done in Hartford that can impact us directly, but really I think that's more in the board's, you know, bailiwick. Obviously, you know, in the past, I've tried to resist, you know, the last two years, cutting any maintenance projects. I think it's very difficult because then they often end up being major capital projects. But if we had to take a cut, you know, rather than hit something like that, I think that we would have to look at eliminating certain projects. So I asked Tom Cullen to tell me which projects in there would be the ones he would postpone. I'm very concerned about all the central office ones, obviously. Central office has lost a number of clerical positions over the years. The workload has not gone down at all. In fact, we've just recently taken on, on behalf of the town, doing all the accounts, all the payables. It allowed the town to actually reduce a position. We did that as a joint project, but we didn't add any staff and we're doing all the payables for all the bills now. The town's not doing those. So when talking about clerical, we're talking about accounts payable, payroll and so forth. And there have been hits taken, taken there. Somebody in instruction in the central office, I think, would be, you know, a huge mistake to think that the, you know, look at this list of initiatives. How many of these are part of what we're trying to do? We have a whole improvement plan we're trying to, trying to roll out. That, I just, I don't want to go on about it too, too much. We did lose a position there two years ago. It was a district constructional improvement teacher. The person did all kinds of work, was a mastery test coordinator, handled all kinds of forms and paperwork and all that got distributed to the existing personnel. I know it's, you know, it's also the person that's, you know, these are people that are evaluating the principles. The whole new way next year of evaluating principles is going to change. I mean, I just think it would be, really set us back in terms of what we're trying to accomplish in the school, in the school district. And, you know, and the manager of facilities, I think it's described in there what, what that does and the work. And, you know, I think about, you know, the timing of this, of all the things we've been through and all the things this year that this town has counted on, central office coming through for. Let's start with the PCBs and then a hurricane and then Sandy. I mean, and, I mean, and the Newtown thing and everything else. And the role the facilities department played in that, in all of that, as well as the central office folks. It's just difficult to swallow. So I understand there's no constituency for it. I also know that, you know, that the audit looked at it and said, we're actually understaffed in central office. I also know that had they thought there was any possibility of cutting central office staff, they would have recommended it. And they also looked at clerical in the same way. So I know, you know, that again, there's nobody from the public is going to stand up there and say, we need more administrators, but the fact is, the workload, the demands, the initiatives this board has going on, I think it would be a big step backwards. So that's why I don't put any of those on the first list that I had out there, the ones I thought we could live with. They come to 500 and something thousand, that's why they're, they're over there. But again, it's, surely it will be your budget, so have at it.
Mrs. Gerber, did that get you the information you wanted?
Yeah, I guess I just, one question, when we were talking in the last meeting about the whole pay-to-play thing, I was also just wondering, and I didn't know if this is something that people do or if it made any sense, would be to not necessarily have it be such a large fee, but some sort of a participation fee, you know, like $50? I didn't, I'm just trying to-
Yeah, we had it as, we actually developed this in the last budget cut. They had it fairly well laid out. We actually set up a three-tiered model.
It covers all of the expenses for the sport?
No, it doesn't, no. These do not cover all the expenses for the sport. They are, it's a partial.
Okay. So this is already partial, then?
Yeah, it's already partial. Right, this in no way covers the expenses for, for the sports. I mean, it may for a very low-cost, high-participation sport, but the goal of this was not to try to cover all the expenses for the sports programs. This is a dent in it.
Right.
And so the recognition is that some sports are more expensive to operate than others and therefore the fees would be different. But the fees do not equate to paying for the full price.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so what is the board's pleasure? Shall we go to the public or does somebody have, want to make an amendment to the main motion based on prior conversation? Mr. Fattabene?
I'll make amendment to the main motion.
Okay.
I would move to add to the main motion, the computer monitor replacements are $30,000 and $70,760.
Where is that?
That's on the technology, capital equipment. In that capital equipment of $260,110 is a fair-for-all high school server replacement, computer monitor replacements and replacement of 99 desktop computers at elementary schools. I would suggest just the $70,760 for the computer monitors and the belief that there are monitors existing that are now, maybe you can wait a year and they'll be a little cheaper and replace them at some other point and that may not compromise too much of the functionality of that equipment. And it's sort of a, you know, my effort is to try and reduce it as much as possible, but yet still maintain the functionality.
The motion is to further reduce the budget by $70,760. Is there a second to that amendment?
Mr. Chair, is, is Mr. Fattabene willing to approve that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
So approved.
And Mrs. Cannelli, who seconded the original motion? Is that acceptable to the body? If so, I hear no objection. So keep track of that, Mrs. Muncell, and I'll come back to you with a question as to where we are at the end. But, so now we have that additional $70,760 if this motion passes that is eliminated from the budget. Any other amendments to the main motion? Mr. Liu?
Not an amendment, but a comment based on the new.
Let me see if there's, if, not if there are any other amendment, it's a friendly amendment, so therefore it's part of the main motion now. Is there any other amendments that people want to make? If not, then I will recognize Mr. Liu. Mr. Carey.
So, Mr. Chair, for the purposes of discussion, I will make an amendment to change the main motion in the following manner. On page two, I would like to remove full-day kindergarten from the reduction and incorporate all the other lines, which I believe totals $363,456. My rationale for this is that the one area where I would like to hear a more in-depth discussion is the full-day kindergarten.
Okay, so there's amendment on the table to-
Oh, there's more.
Okay.
I'd also like to add, again, for the purposes of discussion, elimination of fourth-grade world language, $132,000. Allocation reduction for elementary schools, $33069. Allocation reduction for middle schools, $21588. Pay-to-play athletic participation fee, $250,000. And the reduction of maintenance projects by $101,000.
So could you, I think I have the page three clear in my mind for the amendment to the main motion.
I'm fairly certain Mr. Convertito is not going to take that as a friendly amendment.
He's- He's, I was going to say, he's like Johnny Carson, that he's forecasting the answer, but, um, let's see. How does the first part of your amendment change John's main motion?
Keep, basically, to simplify, keep full-day kindergarten and eliminate everything else on page two. That's part one. Part two is specific line items, but for the purpose of discussion.
Keep full-day kindergarten, you want to implement full-day kindergarten?
No.
No, you don't, that's what I thought.
I...
Remove that from the list.
Remove that from the list.
And everything else stays.
Everything else stays.
But, so you also want to put in the parking fees?
Yes.
And the remaining capital equipment that was not under Mr. Fadabene's?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then you would want to add to that, reducing, eliminating the fourth-grade world language, reducing the allocation allocation, reducing the allocation for middle schools, implement pay-for-play, and eliminate the $101,000 of maintenance projects from next year's budget?
Correct.
Did I capture them all?
It does.
Do board members understand what Mr. Carey is trying to accomplish? Do I have a second for that? Did I get a second for that or not? I don't think I did. Do I have a second for that? I see no second for that. The motion dies from lack of a second.
Thank you.
So we're back to the main motion as friendly amended.
Are you sure?
Any other further amendments that people want to make? Mrs. Iacona, Ms. Iacona?
I would like to, basically, echo Mr. Carey's sentiments, except I would move to go to And I would like to remove one grade music, one grade-five music class.
And which one are you referring, which line?
The second one. So .50 FTE.
The second line down, remove one grade-five music class.
Correct. And I would take off the, eliminate the fourth-grade world language.
So you have two items on page three, which is eliminate the fourth-grade world language...
No, 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 not that one. The, remove the grade five.
Could you mention the dollar amount so we can...
Sure, $30,000. And my rationale behind that is, it just, even though it shaves a little bit off the music, we can pick up classroom instructional time.
Remove the $30,000, but you've mentioned a second item?
Yes, the allocations for the elementary level.
The 33069.
Correct. And the allocation to the middle school, 21588.
So Ms. Iacona's motion is similar to Mr. Carey's in terms of page two, but she would implement the full-day kindergarten and therefore take that savings, and she would ask to eliminate from the budget the $30,000 for the grade-five music class, $33,069 for the allocations at the elementary schools, and 21588 for allocations at the middle schools. Is that clear from the board, what her amendment is? Again, I assume that's not a friendly amendment. And so, is there a second that exists? Is there a second that exists? There is no second, so it dies from lack of a second. Oh, Mr. Carey will second that. Comments, Mrs. Iacona, or have you made your comments?
No, just, yeah, I'll just stress again that, you know, we have to make some reductions somewhere, and I know nobody wants to do it. I don't, I, I'm just going to plead with this board, and I know you don't want to do it now. This town is facing a 7% tax increase if our budget and the town's budget is approved in whole. It is, in my opinion, highly unlikely that our budget will be approved in its entirety. And we need to start to look at some of the things that we can get out, get, to step back on in an effort to get the rest of our budget approved. The town is going to be asked on their side to take some serious, serious action on what they have. They're facing the same fixed costs we are. They're looking at closing a branch library, they're looking at reductions in police personnel, which we know our security budget is carried there. We need that. They're looking at, there's talk of closing a firehouse. There's all kinds of things going on that nobody wants to happen. I just think, in little ways, we have to help. And I think we need to do it now, or I think it's going to be much worse later. That's my plea. And with the fifth grade, I know it doesn't look like a lot, but the bonus to me on that is you pick up some classroom time, but you still get music and you still get chorus in fifth grade. And the allocations, it's about everything else that's going on. We have to figure out a way to do more with less. We have to. It's too big of a nut this year.
Thank you. Mr. Carey, you want to make a comment as the secondor? You don't have to, but you have the right to.
I agree, Ms. Iacona. I have talked to many parents, and I understand the importance of music program and don't want to degrade it, but simultaneously in fifth grade, I've talked to many parents where their children are being taken out of math class to do this lesson. So I think that we have to look at the pros and cons of all these things, and, you know, I agree that this is a step in the right direction.
You would accept all of those except for this as part of the reduction?
Yeah.
Okay, if there are no other comments from board members on that amendment, I'll go to the public.
On the amendment.
On the amendment only. So let me clarify, as you decide whether to come up and speak or not, that, and I'll say it this way, and if Mrs. Iacona says, "No, no, you missed a spot," then she'll correct me.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If, Mrs. Iacona would like to rephrase, as a friendly amendment eliminating the fifth-grade music class, I would be amenable, if there are prime overs.
That and that alone.
I would be amenable to a friendly amendment reducing or eliminating the elementary schools' allocation and the middle school allocations, but not the programming allocations.
So you would be amenable to a friendly amendment that included her three ideas from page three, but...
Page two.
Her three ideas from page three, the music class for $30,000 and the two allocation reductions, but stay with your main amendment for the page two.
I could, if Mrs. Iacona would like to restate her amendment as a friendly motion to eliminate the elementary schools' allocation for $33,069 and the middle school allocations for $21,588, I believe that's an amendment I could live with.
And did you say the music class as well or not? No, you did not. Okay, just those two allocations are the only two that he would accept as a friendly amendment. Do you wish to stay with that, or do you wish to stay with your amendment?
No, I'll accept that.
Okay. Mrs. Cannelli is the secondor of that.
I'm kind of, I just had...
Well, let me...
I wanted to clarify Mrs. Iacona's point, though.
Okay, but, so therefore we have a friendly amendment that the board has also accepted that says, "In addition to the main motion, the main motion will now include the two allocation reductions of $33,069 and $21,588." I'm going to pause just for a moment to make sure Mrs. Munsell has kept up with us.
I have the 33069 and the 21588, but what's the original? Is it everything I'm...
It's the original that, as Mr. Convertito stated it.
Which is, yeah, but...
That we're down to 155, 954, 651, less $70,760, friendly amendment by Mr. Fadabene, less $33,069 and $21,588, friendly amendment by Ms. Iacona.
Are you clear, Mrs. Munsell? Just to make sure that we're not getting too far ahead of you, and then it's too confusing.
And it also includes the 157 for full-day kindergarten?
Yes.
The $50,000 for Panjin?
No, it does not include the 157.
It does.
Oh, no, it does. I'm sorry, yes, it does. But that was part of his original 155, 954. The only changes to the 155, 954, 651 was Mr. Fadabene's number, $70,760, and then the two that Mrs. Iacona just suggested that Mr. Convertito accepted. So that would produce a new number, but those are the three. Mrs. Cannelli, you have a question?
Just through the chair to Mrs. Iacona, I thought you had started by saying that you were coming back to Mr. Carey's point about everything on page two, and that you simply wanted to change the full-day kindergartens. Am I incorrect in that? So that you had wanted to include the increased parking fee and the greater cut to the capital equipment? Is that incorrect?
Originally, yes, but if Mr. Convertito won't take it that way, I'll take what I can get.
So, correct, you know where we are. Any further comments on the main motion as it has been restated with Mr. Fadabene's friendly amendment change and Ms. Iacona's friendly amendment change? Any questions from the board, or shall we go to the public?
Questions or comments?
Comments, but is there any further conversation before I go to the public? Because remember, after the public, there can be further conversation from the board. Assuming that somebody from the public talks, if nobody from the public talks, well, then there would be no further conversation. Thank you very much. Could you state your name and address? But let me, for clarity's sake, that this would adopt Dr. Title's budget with some changes in it that would mean implementing full-day kindergarten. The other items that were mentioned on page two, and the friendly amendments being, we would reduce technology by the $70,000 rounded numbers, and reduce the two elementary and middle school allocation numbers. And so you may have a concern about music, but that is not on the table at the moment based on where the main motion is. So I would...
Or gifted.
Or gifted, and anything else on the list. So you may wish, or world language, you may wish to comment on those, but out of deference to the time that we have, perhaps you could confine your comments to the main motion as it may impact the budget. So having said that, and remember, two minutes.
Just to clarify, first of all, I'm Seth Block, 205 Fairbrook Lane in Fairfield. So you mentioned a second ago that you can make a comment on the amendment. So am I making a comment on the amendment, or the friendly amendment, or the motion that's on the table?
All of the changes were made as friendly amendments, so we only have the main motion on the floor.
Okay.
Which has been changed with the friendly amendments.
Okay, now I'll take my two minutes. So all this discussion that you're having, you're basically talking about 1% of your budget, if my math is right, and I don't have anything other than some notes that I took. And I really think that you guys, as a board, have to go back and really look at the entire budget, not just these things that you've put out there, and come back with a 3% reduction, and stop using our kids as fodder for your inability to do your job. And, you know, going back to the, I'm sorry, going back to the dreaded R-word that Mr. Liu talked about, this board has consistently made mistakes over the years, cost this town a lot of money. You guys are the albatross around our necks, and we are not the Fed. We don't print money. And it's really kind of disgusting to sit here every year when you guys talk about budgets, and you really aren't doing your job, but it's always the kids, it's always music, it's always the best thing this town has to offer that you're attacking. And it's really reprehensible. And yes, we have security concerns, and they need to be addressed, but what you guys are doing, you need to come back here with 3%, 4%, then you're doing your job. Then you're doing fiduciary responsibility. Then you're looking at your budget. Right now, you're playing games. And I really think you need to do your work. And so far, you haven't, except for Mr. Liu, which I appreciate your comments. Everything that we needed to hear, we heard when he spoke. So I hope you do that, and don't ram this down our throats like you did the redistrict thing, because that worked out really well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, out of courtesy, too, if you will, the time we have, consistent applause will slow us down. If you'd give your name and address, and...
Oh.
Can I interrupt for one moment? At one other meeting, somebody stood up and said, "How come only citizens of Fairfield may talk?" We actually use the term "public" within our policy statement and not "citizen." Anybody that has an interest in the Fairfield Public School system, any member of the public, whether they work in the town, have a business in the town, or live in the town, or pay taxes in the town, everybody is welcome to make whatever presentation they want. So I don't want there to be confusion about what the word "citizen" means. It's any member of the public. Please proceed.
Wendy Lee in 429 Riverside Drive. My daughter, who's now in fourth grade, had the privilege of kindergarten short days, where the entire class was made up of extended-day students, so half the kids went home on certain days, and the other half went home on the other days. I know the terminology has changed through the years, so it's a little confusing. But I feel that this introduction to formal education gave her the downtime needed to avoid the unnecessary stress, and it not only provided my child with more one-on-one time with the teacher, it also helped her grow into the positive, school-loving child that she is today. And I know times have changed, and that type of service is not going to be provided anymore. However, my son will be attending kindergarten next year, and I know it's not in his best interest to start with long days. I'm sure if he does, he's going to burn out very quickly and grow to resent school, even though he's a very smart kid. And I understand this is a busing problem. So how about allowing short days, just offer no bus service for those who want extended days? Because there are, you said 85%, so there's still a bunch of people who do want the short days. And so I'm hoping that there can be some kind of exception documented so that I can just pick up my child. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Matthew Hudson, 317 Panzi Road. I just keep hearing with the, from the Board of Education, affordability issues and buzzwords like that. Again, like Ms. Brand said, this is the Board of Education. I think your primary mission should be to make sure that our children are getting exactly what they need. You know, I, personally, as a taxpayer in Fairfield, I don't really mind $100 increase in my taxes over whether, you know, if it's going to decimate the educational system. I'm not a Fairfield native. I chose to live in Fairfield because of the education and the opportunities it affords my children. You know, cuts like this would, as word has been used, decimate some of the opportunities that my children are holding. And, you know, to just say, "Well, you know, maybe finance will cut us anyway." We'll let finance deal with it, and then we'll go to the finance meeting and demand that they don't make these cuts. It shouldn't be the, I think, the way this, this way this debate is being framed, is we're accepting that we automatically need to cut these, a certain amount of programs. I don't understand why we're mandating these cuts be made before any of the other town bodies can even discuss it. And, you know, maybe they will come back and say, "We demand..." I mean, I think no matter what number you pass, they're going to say, "Cut 2% or 5%." Just like last year, I think Dr. Title gave a very good budget, and they cut it, they wanted cuts anyways. So I think you should cut, or not cut, anything right now, and then let the other town bodies worry about it. And then we'll attend those meetings and demand they don't cut there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your name and address?
Good evening, Trudy Durrell, 64 Woodcrest Road. I had to write everything down, so forgive me if I don't look at you directly. And please know that none of my comments are directed to any individual board member nor staff member of Fairfield Public Schools. However, the debate that we're having in referring to cuts for programs occurs annually, year after year, and very soon, if not this year, we are going to have nothing left to cut. It is my understanding that a large portion of why we are having a budget concern more than usual is due to insurance, which is an anomaly, and sometimes things like that happen. Some years, your car breaks down three weeks after your refrigerator broke down, and a month later, your washing machine goes, and it happens. And that apparently is something similar to what has happened here. And I disagree that, right now, cutting before going before the other town bodies is going to result in any kind of good-faith understanding. I fear that if the Board of Ed cuts your own budget, that the other town bodies are going to see that an opportunity to cut exists. Your job as our Board of Education is to defend the budget choices that you make and educate the other town bodies as to why they are important. You know, either way, what you're doing, parents are going to pay, whether it's taxes, or whether we end up paying for parking, paying extra for school lunches, paying for participation in sports, having limited guidance counselors. It's not fair to do both, which may end up happening if you cut now. And perhaps we need to really think about putting... And perhaps we need to really think about putting student learning and what's going to impact student learning first, rather than salaries and benefits. And again, no intended disrespect, but as the third-highest-paid superintendent...
Ms. Durrell, I think we're at the time. If you could read the last sentence and then stop.
Okay, fine. What is affordable is not always supportive of best practice. Quality is a choice, and I would really hope that as a Board of Education, you would choose quality.
Thank you. One of the unpleasant tasks of being the timekeeper is that I do have to remind people to move on, so I apologize. State your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Josie Jandevitz at 111 Aaron Hill Road. And I don't know that I hate to follow someone who has so eloquently spoken and written something, but I echo the sentiments we've heard thus far. And in lieu of supporting Dr. Title's entire budget, I do support the motion that is on the table. I think the issue that I see is that I feel, and I think the parents who I've talked to feel, that the board is often reactionary, and we are facing something of an anomaly this year that is difficult and challenging. But I agree that I think we need to really stand strong and talk about what is important for our children, cutting things. And ever since I have moved here and ever since I have become involved in this school, our education system, all I've heard is cutting. And it's unfortunate, because I feel that we are going down a path and we're not looking at long-range, long-term implications of what we're doing here. And Mr. Carey talked a lot about the increase in spending that we've had with the Board of Ed, but I'd also wonder, what is the increase in enrollment? And what is our percent, what is our dollar per child? And how has that changed over time? Has it decreased? Because I kind of wonder if it has. I feel like our enrollment has grown. I don't know. I don't know those numbers. But I would task you all with knowing that. And I think, I do know I was an economics major, statistics, you can use them however you want. I do want to know what is the data? And as we are making all these cuts to programs that are important and things that do make our children well-rounded individuals, I'd really like to know that the data isn't just being thrown out there to kind of scare us all and make us all kind of say, "Okay, let's go this route of reduction." So I agree, I'd rather go to the Board of Finance, I'd rather go to my RTM members and fight them down the path, rather than give in now. So that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Lincoln Hayes. I live at 850 Mountain Laurel. I echo a lot of the comments, but I'm also realist, because there are going to be some cuts, I think, by the other bodies. So I look at this forum as thinking about some of the things that maybe should be cut, could be thought of being cut. I definitely think the music and the world language are two areas that are critical for our kids to get in this day and age, especially world language, where it's ludicrous to think that our kids should not be exposed in fourth grade to language. Now separately, what I'm a little bit disappointed on is, I think I echo from the first comment, the first person, is there some other things that I just see as a parent that I don't have the full picture on? But I know about two years ago, Dr. Title put into his budget, and I think it, for an additional literacy specialist consultant in each of the elementary schools, I question the need for that additional service. If we're talking about getting, I know music, I know Spanish, I know those teachers are teaching to my kids. I know this, and I looked at BRR, that's my school book. I've got 19 teachers that teach to our kids, and then you have some additional music, Spanish, those teachers that are also directly teaching my kids. There, I believe, what was the number? I think it was 29 additional listed as instructional staff, who I love, do great job. Those are, there's eight special ed, there's three more language therapy specialists, there's language arts. I question or wonder, and I'm not saying I want to cut any of those, but if we're talking about looking at only this picture, I would take a bigger picture. Think of your entire budget, think of all your staff, and do you need all those? Thank you.
Thank you very much. State your name and address, please.
Dana Alger, 245 Taunton Road. Good evening, Board of Education members. My name is Dana Alger, and not only am I volunteering as the PTA president of Riverfield School this year, but I had the opportunity to teach kindergarten there for four years as well. I stand here tonight in support of Dr. Title's budget. In this economy, I understand the budget needs to be reduced, and everything from programs to office staff, once again, are on the chopping block. I realize that all items are going to be under scrutiny as the budget is analyzed, but I ask that when considering cuts, please look at items that do not directly impact our students and our reputation as the premier district that we are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. State your name and address, please.
Thank you. John Levinson, 883 Arbor Road. We have an affordability problem, and I hear all this about cuts and cuts. The budget's never been cut. We've never had a budget for one year lower than another, lower than the previous, in the years that I've looked, and I've looked back. Over the past 15 years, Consumer Price Index is up 40% cumulative. I'll bet that most of our incomes are not up 40%, but the BOE budget is up 111%. The town budget, greatly influenced by the BOE, is up 104. Those numbers are two to three times what the CPI is, and my guess is, I don't have data on this, what people's incomes are up. That's a problem. It's a problem that's festering, it's a long-term problem. We've got a champagne taste in education and no longer a champagne budget. I applaud the BOE for taking a reduction here, the first in years that they've done this. I'm disappointed that you're arguing about micro-adjustments that my math says are 0.1% to the budget that you've just mentioned, as opposed to some macro-cuts and some real thinking. I ask the BOE to look at every option to reduce cuts, to reduce expenses, that means cutting year to year, and to increase revenues, especially in non-instructional areas where data shows that we spend well more than our DRG average on non-instructional costs. With severe budget programs today, apparently for years to come, it seems redistricting is among the most promising and cost-effective and desirable ways to deal with unbalanced school attendance. It's uncomfortable for those affected, as it was for me in junior high many years ago, but it's the best solution for our community as a whole, and these are the type of decisions that this board is asked to shepherd through. One last point, and that is please study Trumbull. I don't know what they do, but they do it really well. Fairfield apparently has a lot to learn. They've got the same or better CMT scores than us on a budget that's 15% lower than ours.
Thank you, Mr. Levinson.
I'll give other examples as well. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and address, please.
Amy Francoletti, kindergarten teacher, Stratfield Elementary School.
Kate Shalow, 1135 Jennings Road, and I'm a kindergarten teacher here at BRR. We are members of the kindergarten task force, and we're here to say that in vested interests of the kindergarteners in Fairfield now, we support full-day kindergarten.
Our reasons for this are that full-day kindergarten would provide students with opportunities for social development in the classroom. At present, with our schedules the way they are and the academic rigors we are faced with, we don't have as much time to give them a social time together, to work together and learn, how to play, how to share, how to take turns, and those are things that we're challenged with every day. They need those kinds of breaks throughout their day, and our schedule right now does not allow us to do that. In addition, full-day kindergarten would give us the flexibility in scheduling to give the students an optimal learning environment so that they can get those academics in an environment that's better for them, rather than us trying to cram it in into shorter periods of time. Right now, we're faced with very choppy scheduling, and by looking at other districts, Trumbull was one of them, their full-day schedules, and we looked at exactly what a kindergarten day was. Those days were much more smooth, the kids knew what to expect, and we would like that for our children here in Fairfield as teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Both of you together took less than two minutes. Congratulations. Please give your name and address.
Thank you. I was wondering if I could have the extra minute. My name is Lisa Havy.
No.
And I'm the president of Fairfield's PTA Council. We have, I have provided this document to the board, but I'm going to read it here. We have a resolution for Fairfield PTA Council, whereas, the PTA Council of Fairfield believes that every child of Fairfield must be assured of an equal level of educational experience -- and my hands are shaking -- and opportunity. And whereas, the PTA Council of Fairfield feels that the children attending the Fairfield Public School System must not be placed in a position of undue stress in order to manage the fiscal needs of the town of Fairfield. And whereas, the PTA Council of Fairfield has witnessed over time the deferred maintenance cuts and cuts in curriculum and educational programs add greater costs to the town budget in future years to repair buildings and restore programs and such. Whereas, the PTA Council of Fairfield recognizes that a strong and vibrant educational system is the cornerstone that helps maintain property values in the town of Fairfield. Be it resolved, that the PTA Council of Fairfield supports the following document known as "The High Five for Fairfield Students," as a statement of equally important principles that we strongly believe that make the Fairfield School District exceptional and the town of Fairfield stronger by creating an educational environment that is supportive of our students and necessary for optimum academic performance. Each point has supporting, but I'll just read the points. Adhere, one, adhere to current Board of Education maximum class-size guidelines. Deliver a, two, deliver a comprehensive curriculum to students of all abilities and levels. Three, advance elementary school populations through middle and high schools as cohesive units.
Excuse me, since you've provided it and your time is up, can I ask you to just summarize with one sentence and...
Four, maintain and utilize best practices. Five, provide and support for health, safety, wellness, and security of all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Lisa Winjam, 111 Borosky Road. I would love to support Dr. Title's budget in full and ask you to go ahead and go forward to the other town bodies with it. And I know they're going to cut it, but when we come back here and you have to cut programs, I would ask you to take a long, hard look at what you need to cut in the budget. As a senior not-for-profit executive, I sit in budget-cutting decisions and meetings all the time. And what it comes back to, to us as executives, senior executives, in the end, is how do we show leadership? And we show leadership by protecting the programs and services that our clients depend on, and we at the top foregoing pay raises, we at the top deciding to cut administrators. That's how we show leadership. So I would ask that when we come back here, we think about whether we still need to preserve the house system and seven administrators at each of two high schools, and if we can't perhaps do away with some of that and forego some pay raises in the top-paying positions in this board and this budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're getting very good. I think I'm almost down to only three or four people clapping. I'm keeping track. Please state your name and address.
Suzanne Misca, 123 Rygate Road. Yeah, this is a big budget, and of course, we're seeing programs again. The problem is, I sat through last year's budget and was told that 21 paraprofessionals were going to be released, and that was the reason why we needed 13 part-time secretaries at the elementary school level. Except when I went to the Board of Finance meeting, I sat there and heard Dr. Title, when asked by Jim Walsh what the unemployment option was going to be on those poor 21 paraprofessionals, we were told that the 21 paraprofessionals were going to be absorbed into the system. We can't keep absorbing people. And while I appreciate the members of the board who are asking to have the cut, it can't come from programs. It has to come on the employment side, and it has to come from the administration level. And what will happen when we have to look at teachers and look at administrators is then be something we're going to have to do down the road. But right now, you have a huge problem with medical benefits. You have a huge problem with six-figure salaries on the curriculum side. To see on page three that you have an instructional curriculum person, that you have a maintenance supervisor, when we have two other supposed supervisors, we have supervisors up the yin yang. We have curriculum leaders up the yin yang, yet the teachers are the ones who write the curriculum. So I ask, let's not look at world language, music. Pay-to-play is discriminatory, in my opinion, because if you can't pay, I guess you can't play. Your problem is on the administration side. That is where you need to focus. Please do so.
Thank you very much. State your name and address.
Good evening, Laura Berneskeen, 1742 Mill Plain Road. I would just like to echo the sentiments of a lot of people here. I know budget cuts need to be made, and no one really wants to look at central office. Kids always get hit first, and this is a Board of Education, not a Board of Employment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mark Halsted, 237 Crest Terrace. It's my first Board of Education meeting. I've heard a lot of different things said tonight that I agree with. What I'd like to say is that 10 years ago, my wife and I moved into this district because of the educational system, and that's one of the reasons why we love it. Your programs are wonderful. Your programs need to be first, always. And I want to tie together two things that I heard about tonight. Earlier, a $23 million capital improvement was discussed for Ludlow High School. I'm an architect by trade. I think that, taking a more holistic approach to this, programs have to come first. We have a fairly good physical plant in this town, I believe, and to be talking very glibly about $23 million, and then on the other hand, to be saying a $360,000 cut out of $156 million budget is substantial, it is not. But a $23 million cost is huge. And I believe, I just needed to say this by my own profession, shooting my profession in the foot by saying, "Don't build more schools." But on the other hand, there's this one-upmanship that goes on among school districts, that you have to have the school with the curvy roof and the curvy wall and the glass wall. It doesn't help the kids learn better. What helps the kids learn better is the great programs that this school district offers and must maintain, and they can do that in rectangular classrooms. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
And, well, Mark, say hello to your brother Bob. State your name and address, please.
Maureen Sawyer, 43 Thor Place. I just came from seeing my fourth-grader's orchestra demonstration at Riverfield School, and it was just a fabulous demonstration of what our programs offer our children, and this is fourth grade. They couldn't read music four months ago. Now they're playing the bass, the viola, the violin, et cetera. It's wonderful. As Board of Education members, you guys were elected to serve our children. Therefore, you should be supporting the budget that Dr. Title puts before you, not creating a tidy list for other town bodies to use as talking points regarding what is perceived by many residents in our area to be an inflated budget. Dr. Title and his staff work really hard to give our children well-rounded education, which should include music, art, world language, and as Board of Education members, you should be applauding what they do for our children, not trying to tear it down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Anne Marie Soto. I live at 386 Random Road in Fairfield. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Osborne Hill, and I just wanted to say that I support kindergarten and I support full-day kindergarten.
Thank you very much. Your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Vasidulus. I live at 896 Mill Plain Road. It's really time to take a serious look at the inefficiency in administrative costs of running the Fairfield School System. How many administrators do we need to educate a child? Looking through the budget book, one may conclude that the town is running a secretarial services company. How many secretaries in the central office do we possibly need? A total of 27 secretaries seem to be working in the central office, and they cumulatively make $1.2 million. Each of the high schools has 12 secretaries, and each of the middle schools has four. Are we in the business of keeping secretaries employed or educating children? Overall, the district employs 75 secretaries, in addition to other clerical staff, and pays $3.2 million for them. Why is it so easy for Dr. Title, year after year, to propose cuts to student programs despite claiming that he cares about students, that he claims that our students receive a good-quality education? At times of financial distress, many CEOs and leaders in the private sector have taken salary reductions or foregone salary increases. I see that Dr. Title has budgeted another $5,000 to his compensation on the top of the most generous compensation package for a superintendent in the state of Connecticut. We can cut student programs while we completely ignore the excessive administrative costs of running our school district. Let's start with the low-hanging fruit and cut the inefficiencies in the central office first, before threatening to cut programs and services for our students. We can easily save over $2 million by cutting half of the secretaries and half of the curriculum leaders. The decrease in overall headcount would automatically generate savings and healthcare costs, something that can be accomplished by introducing pay-for-play and other similar initiatives something that can be accomplished by introducing pay-for-play and other similar initiatives that are clearly aimed at generating revenue.
Excuse me? We're at the two-minute mark?
Okay.
If you could hand that in, we would distribute it to all board members. Thank you very much.
I would just say in conclusion that for Dr. Title, foregoing a salary increase would set the right example and would show willingness to do the right thing when times are tough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Mike Varga, Rock Ridge Road in Fairfield. It's torturous sitting out here in the audience, because in a way, you're all absolutely right. And whenever you come to a conclusion and you send this budget to the boards, the other boards, you're all going to be wrong. There's no way you're going to come out of this winning. I can't compliment Dr. Title enough. He has stood behind his budget. He's stood behind his administrators. He's stood behind his staff, and he believes in the education program that's, that's being presented. I, I really think you should pass the budget as best you can tonight. Send it on, and we'll all have to go out and fight at the other board meetings in order to support the budget, not one that you cut. If they choose to cut it, we'll fight them for it, but we shouldn't have to fight you for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Name and address, please.
Kate Daniello, 490 Shrove Oak Lane. At the last meeting, the Board of Ed made suggestions of things Dr. Title and his staff should look at for reducing the budget. Dr. Title returned tonight with dollar amounts attached to those suggestions. In my opinion, this seems backwards. The Board of Ed has requested that the budget be reduced. Dr. Title and his staff are the appropriate people to come up with those recommended reductions. With respect to the curriculum leaders, I agree with Mr. Perry that perhaps that area should be looked at again in terms of first-year, second-year, third-year savings or not savings, and perhaps thinking out of the box rather than replacing curriculum leaders with department heads or whatever the, the solution was. We need to think about out-of-the-box ways to do more with the money that the Board of Education gets in this town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Jen Carolyn, 200 Rock Ridge Road. I have worked with PTA Council and a local elementary school on the Tools for Schools for the past three years, and one thing that I keep steadfast on is the condition of our buildings. So I really would like the focus of cuts. As much as I definitely approve programs, I would, it was disappointing to see that facilities was on that, because as we can see from our history, if we let small problems go unattended, they turn into larger problems, which can then absolutely affect the educational benefits to the kids, because it's affecting their health, let alone the staff. So I hope that when it comes to cuts, that we remember what we've done in the past, and we make a change, and we choose to continually put money into small pieces on a regular basis maintaining our schools. I don't care about what roof we have or the shape of it. I care that it's built properly, it's sound, and that the people inside are protected. So if we can keep that off the table for cuts, many parents, teachers, students would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Name and address, please.
Jay Arthur Dunn. I live down the street, around the corner.
That's a valid address if you live in Maine.
We all don't think alike, unfortunately so, for if we did, there'd be no thinking at all. In my opinion, the greatest star in the sky that has been mentioned is all-day kindergarten. It seems like centuries ago, this question came up. At that time, 85% to 90% of the parents wanted it. In this case, it seems as if, if I heard correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, it would also, quote, "save money." You can't beat that. Helps the students and helps the parents. Before I vacate this board here, there rose an individual on this board, and I have commented to him. He has to change his ways. He is incarcerated with common sense and lamed by logic. Definite, definite detriment. However, he is good enough to present what some of us shy away from. And to all of you, prayers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Helen Dodson, 40 Woodbine Lane. I'm a former member of the Board of Education. I have two children who went through the public school system here and thrived because of the comprehensive, well-rounded education they got, including music, world language, and a really excellent science and math program. It's been three years since my term ended and about 10 years since I stood on this side of the podium. It's a little intimidating, but I hope you will pass this budget motion that's on the table. The superintendent is right, absolutely correct, in not supporting any of the proposed program cuts. I've lived at Fairfield a long time, and I cannot recall a Board of Education actually taking the initiative to cut education. Not even in the bad old days when the board was fighting publicly about high school space did they proactively cut program. Cuts in the '80s and '90s did happen, and they were met with a big fight by an organization called CARE, which some of you might remember, Citizens Alliance to Restore Education. It was a successful effort, and if your program cuts go through, might be time to bring CARE back. Every single person on the Board of Ed since I've lived here recognized that it was not simply our prerogative to educate children to the best of our ability, but our absolute moral and ethical imperative, maybe even a legal responsibility. You're the Board of Education, not the Board of Finance, and I'm sorry if I sound like I'm lecturing you, but it's the truth. Do you really want to be the Board of Education that volunteered to cut education, that took away music programs when we know that they are tied to success in math and science? The board that made, do you want to be the board that made poorer children pay to play sports with their wealthier friends? That took away, that took away early opportunities to get to know the world?
Mrs. Dodson, there's professional courtesy, but unfortunately, we're at the two minutes. Can you wrap it up?
Okay. I'll just say, do you want to be the, the board that eliminated uniformity in curriculum so that once again, people could say that this school is better than that one, and that next time, they'll be right? Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your prior service on this board. Name and address, please.
Oh, good evening. That was so nice. I'll piggyback on that. Bruce Monte, 193 Skytop Terrace, former member of this august body. Thank you for your service. I do not envy you. Certainly not tonight. This is a hard task. Couple of things I heard tonight, though. We were cautioned not to ask for everything we want. Does anyone sitting on this stage really believe that Dr. Title's budget reflects everything we want? If so, we need greater aspirations. I am deeply troubled by the notion, which seems to be gaining some traction on the board, that those things that happen outside the classroom do not contribute to student achievement inside the classroom. Whether discussing central office staff or curriculum leaders, it is dangerously misleading to assert that these critical functions do not have an impact on the kids in the classroom. Dr. Title, there is a constituency for the Fairfield Public School administrators, even if it is just I. But that constituency should include anyone familiar with the operational audit that indicated that our administration is understaffed, a fact that is continually borne out by comparisons to other districts in our state and our DRG. On the revenue side, I'd like to address two items. Pay-to-play. I think we're all familiar with the, the concept of an educational divide. That's the difference in access to education due to socioeconomic factors. When we talk about fees for activities that are integral to the education of our children, we risk creating an educational divide right here within Fairfield. So I think the fundamental question is, does this board view athletics, clubs, and the arts as an integral component of our children's education? In high schools with enrollment that is swelled to 1,500 students per building, we know how critical it is to provide those things that engage our children and connect them to teachers and other students. Just to, to wrap up and thank you for your indulgence, a couple of final points. Look, 78.4% of the budget is tied to salaries and benefits. I think you all know that number in your sleep. And so any long-term change in our budget requires a fundamental change in educational delivery.
Mrs. Monte, you have your last point.
My last point. This board and its, and its predecessors have actually done a very good job of cost control. Using the 4.8% annual increase figure that one of the board members provided, after accounting for a 21.1% increase in enrollment over the last 10 years and 20, 26.9% inflation over the last 10 years, the actual per capita real increase in cost, per-student increase in cost, has been less than 0.4%. Over 20 years, that will compound to a mere 8.1% increase in your taxes.
Thank you.
Done a great job without cutting programs. Please, don't cut them now.
Thank you very much, mental honor. And thank you for your prior service on this board. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Mike Borsar, and I live at 91 Euclid Ave. It hasn't come up this evening, so I'm hesitant to actually bring it up, but I actually wanted to discuss the fact that although music, language arts, athletics, and whatnot in our school systems are extremely important, one of the programs that are listed on the page three is the gifted program. I know some children that are in the gifted program. Actually, half of the baseball team that I coach is actually on it. They're very, very talkative. They're very creative. My son happens to be one of them. We haven't spoken about that, but in terms of raising awareness, it is a program that differentiates our town with a lot of the DRG and the, the other towns that we are compared to. So I know the list that also came out this evening shows that some of those other comparisons where towns have cut those programs. I would dare say that if it comes down to that, I would be absolutely willing to pay extra for that program. Those children that are in it stretch their minds, they stretch their capabilities. They are naturally gifted children who are able to participate in that. And our town affording our children that opportunity is huge. It's such a great benefit, along with all the other programs that we have. So thank you for the, the hard work that you guys are doing here. We really do appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoag, it appears you have the last comment?
Not so lucky.
Good, good. Hi, Mary Hoag, 165 Stonewall Lane. I'm not going to repeat what I think a lot of people have already said that I agree with, but what I guess I'm surprised over, it's a process thing, that this is the Board of Education, and I expect you to be advocates for education. And it's concerning to me that we know we're going to see cuts to the education budget. This is not the place that I would expect to see it, and I definitely don't expect to see the Board of Education cutting, suggesting to cut programs. We know that the budget, the town budget includes the education budget, which is about 60% for us, but that's not unusual. That's pretty standard. So this is no surprise. It's not, it's not a bad thing that that's what it is. It's a statement about who we are in Fairfield and what we believe in, and I think we should stick with that statement, and we need you to be advocates for education, not advocates for finance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Llewellyn, I presume these are comments about the budget?
They are. I can go elsewhere if you'd like. Okay. 524 Sturgis Road. You know, I was actually looking at this piece of paper, and I found it interesting because there are, I think, a lot of opportunities to cut overhead in the central office and not impact our children's education. As I look at this, I see that we have a mixture of fuzzy math and incomplete analysis, because I look at the analysis that was done on the curriculum leaders, for example. What it points out here is that there are four, I think the analysis used four, six individuals who would then be bumped to teachers, which would then bump teachers or replace teachers who are retiring. So no one would actually lose a job, but you actually have net savings in the first year of probably a quarter of a million dollars. And if you kind of roll it through over a five-year NPV basis, because it's an annuity, we're actually looking at saving, eh, $2, $3 million in the first couple of years. So there's actually, there are huge savings, because this is actually an incomplete analysis. So I think that we should look to cut at central office. I think that, you know, some of us have had taxes rocketing up by, you know, north of 20% over the last four or five years with things that have gone on. So at the end of the day, unfortunately, Dr. Title, it is our money and not, you know, I apologize, but some of us have concerns. Spend it like it was your own. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is April Klein, and I live at 104 Hillside Road. I have a fourth grader, a sixth grader, and a kindergartner starting in September. So I've been with the Town of Fairfield Education for six years, and I think I have 12 more years to go. I think I'll have gray hair in 18 years. I think, I'm a bottom-line person. The first thing I kind of notice is by Perry Lou is $118,000 for busing for new preschool at Dwight. Love the great program at Dwight and the new preschool, but I always drive my kids to preschool, so there's $118,000 right there. I was a little taken back by that one. I think what you have on the table actually looked great, and this is my first BOE meeting in three hours. Wow. These meetings are long. It's a good program which you put together, and I like the second page. That was very thought-through. So, good job, and I agree with it, and I definitely agree with the full-day kindergarten due to the fact that I had two girls that did full day, and every time I sat in the auditorium, there was two to three moms that raised their hand out of the hall auditorium that wanted the shorter day. So that's a good decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. State your name and address, please.
Reed Williamson, 411 Joan Drive. I just wanted to thank you for not considering cutting music and language. Thanks.
I think you have the prize for most concise statement. Thank you. And so I'm going to assume Mr. Lee is the last person, unless somebody walks down the aisle and claims the prize of being the last. Mr. Lee?
Good evening. My name is Ken Lee. I live at 71 Rota Avenue, and I won't be the shortest, but I won't be the longest. I don't think it's any surprise to any of us here on boards, off boards, any resident in town. It's just going to be a difficult year. And I'm here as a dad, because that's my primary job. Everything else comes after that. I think we all know that we have to figure out a way to become fiscally more responsible in every aspect of our town, in our Board of Education and, and our town management and everything else. And I think the issues have been beaten to death, and I think we're all pretty clear what has to happen. I don't think it can happen overnight. I have had the opportunity to watch this for a few years, and I've seen an awful lot of progress in every aspect of what we're doing, and I think that's a good thing. If I was qualified to make, tell you what to do, I'd be sitting up there. I'm not, so I won't do that. What I will do is simply ask you to try to protect our children's education as best as you can. There are town bodies that are going to be responsible for the funding, and I'm sure they're going to have suggestions on that funding. I'm really encouraged to see that there's a lot more cooperation between our bodies, and I think that's a great thing. And I think that what you have done over the few days, although I haven't been able to attend for personal reasons, shows a lot of progress, and I hope that continues, because we're all in this together, people with children, without children. We all live in Fairfield. We all have to protect our property values. We have to protect our children and share our most important assets. And I thank you for giving your thoughts, and I just ask you to, to try to do your best to keep our kids moving in the direction that everyone wants them to go. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, do you want to let the person behind you actually take the first mic?
You want to finish off. You want to give it to the end?
I'll let her be at the end. She's much more important than I am. Mark Patton, 503 Valley Road, RTM District 7. I first want to say, I applaud the board on the motion on the table, and if approved, I think, for the first time in many years, again, as somebody who's sat in this room on, on the other side and, and seen it go all sorts of different ways, I think you're trying to do your work and, and do things the right way without sacrificing the quality of the education in our town, which I've spoken to many times, that, that's why people move here. That's why young families move here. That's why people stay here. It's a big benefit to living in Fairfield. I applaud full-day kindergarten, which I know has been, you know, up and down on the block for the last several years. The one thing that I wish you would put back in on that list on page two is the increased parking fees. I think that, you know, that's kind of a, a bonus. It's, it's a, it's a privilege to be able to do that for a student or a parent, to let a student do that, and for them to pay a slightly, you know, higher fee to raise $20,000. I don't think that's going to affect anything. You know, it's not a pay-to-play for sports. It's not anything that affects education. I think it's something that parents should be more than willing to do. And again, thank you for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Can I ask an RTM member, Mark, before you go away, could I ask an RTM member to... Before you go away, could I ask an RTM member to help be the AVA person and get the mic down to where our friend can?
Hello, everybody. My name's Isabella Lopez Caliper, and this is my first Board of Education meeting that I've been to. And I am a fifth-generation Fairfielder, so my dad has been in Fairfield, and then my grandma has been in Fairfield, and then my great-grandma has been in Fairfield, and then my great-great-grandma has been in Fairfield, and it, yeah, that's pretty much it. And I'm in the fifth grade, and I participate in the challenge program at Jennings School, and I am against cutting the gifted program at the middle school, because I feel that the challenge program has given me a chance to feel accepted for my intelligence, because in class, many of my friends play sports, which I'm not very successful at, and this program allows me to be with peers that relate to me, and it's where I can kind of feel like where I belong. It has allowed me to feel comfortable with my friends, and it gives me a chance to think outside the box for one. Sporty kids are praised for their athleticism, and the challenge program praises me for my hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to assume that the, I'm going to assume that the public knows better than to try and follow that. So back to the Board. Mr. Lou.
Thank you very much. I've listened to so, all of the comments tonight, and I've also listened to the Board members here, and I honestly believe, I know we have our differences, but I honestly believe we are all trying to make this district the best they can be, to be fiscally responsible, to try to move forward with what we need to do. But at the same period of time, I'm concerned that as we are trying to box our way out of this budget, we're going to slip and make decisions that might be premature. And before I go on, a question to Dr. Title. When does the budget, after we send the budget to the other town, to the town bodies, when does it come back to us? It comes back to us after the RTM action, which is May 6th, 7th. So that gives us several months to actually do some of the things that have been talked about this evening, to reexamine the budget, to look at places that possibly we can cut, and to think of new creative ways. I'm going to make a suggestion that we don't make these cuts tonight, that we pass this budget the way it is, not because of, out of disrespect to the other town bodies, but because that is part of our job, and that I do think we are going to get cuts, and I think it will give us the time then to come back, have a number, and for us to actually do some of the kind of work that we're talking about here that really cannot be done at this 11th hour. So I'm hoping that possibly we can not vote on this next, with respect to the people who have proposed this, not vote this forward, and to pass the budget as it is, as proposed by Dr. Title.
That's what your hope and suggestion is, but you wish to make it as a motion, I presume. So I think the amendment would be to not adopt any of the changes suggested and return back to the original budget number. Is there a second for that amendment? Mrs. Brand has seconded it.
Wait a minute. I just, wait, I'm sorry. What I had said was-- This is my hope, that we could, no, 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 no. I don't want to, I don't want to do that. I would want to do public comment again. What I, what I want, it's just that, it's an idea--
Okay.
--that basically, let's not pass this amendment. Let us then, after we vote that down, pass the budget as is.
There's a motion on the floor that we would have to act on first, Mr. Lou.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So let's vote--
So we'll vote on the motion, depending on where that goes.
Let's not pass--
There may and may not be further action. If there are no further comments, are we ready to act? Mrs. Brand.
Because I seconded, I want to just explain where I'm coming from. I've listened to where we are tonight. We've been all over the map. There doesn't seem to be consensus. I know I have some of my thoughts, and I honestly believe that, quite frankly, I'm not going to have majority support moving forward on those as well. But more importantly, I think what we want to do is have more deliberation in what we would, think would be best, and we've been doing this in way too short a time, and I'm not comfortable with how tight this is. I appreciate that people want to be more fiscally conservative. I would like to see some changes moving forward. That said, this is still in a very short time, so I would actually support the motion for those reasons.
I think Mr. Lou withdrew the motion and said that, let's see what happens with the main motion, and then go from there. So we are back to the main motion. Any final comments? I've refrained from making comments throughout the debate, but I will say that I am support of the main motion. I think we do have to make a decision on the budget to allow time for Dr. Title to make the changes that are suggested and then move it forward to town bodies. It is a correct statement that some wanted to be able to go deeper. Others felt that this shouldn't have been changed at all, and the motion that is on the table reflects a compromise between those two viewpoints, if you will. So let's move forward with action on the motion, and then we'll see where we stand from that. Mr. Fattabene, you want to make a final comment?
One final, I guess, if I could, through the chair, to have Dr. Title comment a little bit. The biggest thing in my mind in this is the full-day kindergarten, and I just want to get reassurances in his opinion that it is beneficial for the students, not just because of the cost savings, but to have full-day kindergarten.
No, I think it is beneficial to the students, and I think we can accommodate families who need an exception to that, and we'll work through that on an individual basis with families. But I think it is educationally beneficial. It is clearly what people want, and you heard from our professional staff, it was their opinion as well. So I support it for educational reasons, and it has the added benefit of saving us $157,000.
All right. I just wanted that clarification, my own mind.
I want to restate the motion, but if you have a final comment before I do--
Just a quick follow-up to that. In fact, it was going to be a recommendation coming out regardless--
Correct.
--of the budget.
We were on this path. Yes.
Okay. So let me restate the motion, and so if I can get from Doreen what the new number, in your printed agenda, you'll see that there is a blank there, and so the new number that will go in there is? And that recognizes the various friendly amendments that reduced the elementary school allocation, the middle school allocation. It changed the monitor replacement project, moved that out of the budget, implemented the full-day kindergarten, moved the pension over to the food service budget, and increased the custodial fees, and that's how we got to that number. If there are no further questions, I'll call the question and ask for a raise of hands. All in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convettito, Mrs. Gerbert, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iacona, Mr. Fattabene, Mr. Carey, all opposed? Mr. Lou? Mrs. Brand? We now have a budget. For those who were keeping score, the total was about $345,000, give or take, that the budget was adjusted by. So that ends the business for the morning, evening. We do have a, if I could ask you, if you're leaving, be, do so quietly, because there may be other members of the public who wish to comment on matters not already discussed, and in the event they are, this is the time to do so. I see nobody coming down, so we will move to open board comment. Do we have any open board comment that people wish to make? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And again, if I could ask you to try and quiet, leave as quietly as possible. The Board still has, is in session. Thank you very much.
This may be pointless at this point, based on where we are with this budget, Mr. Chair, but I had made a suggestion, and I feel strongly about, that we should have set a cap this year and then directed our team through a sense of a body, hopefully, to bring that down to a lower amount. Mrs. Brand made a different suggestion about potentially adopting a five-year fiscal plan. I think both ideas have merit. I'd like to potentially suggest that we have a sense of body resolution. This Board include an action item. At its upcoming meeting, discuss the budget process, which includes ways to limit control, reduce, or slow the growth of future school budgets, as well as discuss the possibility of developing a five-year fiscal plan. I'd like to put that forward as a motion to the sense of the body. My hope is, in having this discussion and putting forward now that we will be having this discussion, that we can send a message to the other town bodies that we are serious about creating a fiscal framework for this body that we will follow. So if I could put that forward--
Let me comment, and then you decide if you want to, if you want to add an action item, but would have to be done by six votes, number one. Number two, this body, I think, has already voted to adopt a goal of reviewing the budget process, and so I think that goal is already there. It was not as well-defined as your statement right now, but that does not mean that, once the group sits down, and the group is going to be the full body, to talk about it, that there's no idea that's off the table as part of that discussion. Nonetheless, if you wish to try and have a motion on the table that would be allowed by a six-vote majority, then you would--
And again, just to clarify, Mr. Chair, I'm not looking at an item to this agenda. What I'm looking to do with your indulgence is get a sense of this body about the willingness to discuss as a, as an item on a future meeting, I'll say between now and August, which would incorporate, include ways to limit control, reduce, slow the growth of future school budgets, as well as discuss the possibility, Mrs. Brand's idea, and please, I don't want to speak to you, Mrs. Brand, but what I've heard from you, of developing a five-year fiscal plan. So I'm looking for caps. Mrs. Brand said fiscal plan. What I'd like to do is have a discussion about that, and I'd like to have a commitment that we do it by a date certain.
So no motion, but there is a commitment on the chair's part to have that as an official agenda item. The commentary about the kind of comments that you made, I would rely on the comments from the Board, if they wish to make any--
Just correction. It's actually an educational plan with cost estimates, not a financial plan, but I'm looking primarily for a five-year educational plan with a financial with it. It's not amend as a cap. It's how we developed our long-range facility plan the same way.
Thank you, Mr.-- Mrs. Iacona.
Thank you, and I, I'm really grateful for Mrs. Brand and Mr. Carey for bringing up those two things, because I think as we move through the budget process, it'll be important for you, Mr. Chairman, to emphasize with the other town bodies that we recognize, in the words of the first Leckman, "The Board of Education is not an island," and that we're willing to, as a Board, have a discussion about how we can do things moving forward, and I think that's important. We used to run into a lot of issues, for those of you who weren't on the Board or weren't involved, with our, with our long-term facilities. It's Mrs. Brand's point, and she can remember this, and we would constantly get shot down because we didn't have a plan. So I think anything we have in place will just help our cause rather than hurt it, and I just think it's important to communicate that, so that they know that we're thinking about it, and it's on the horizon, as, you know, small a gesture that might seem. So thank you.
The discussion will take place. Any other comments that people want to make on Mr. Carey's suggestion? If not, any other open board comments? I'll only make one that I honestly thought that we would get to a public comment on this agenda somewhere around 10:15. The fact that we are getting to adjournment at 10:40 is a compliment to this Board for their efficient discussion, and for Mr. Fattabene's suggestion that perhaps Ludlow should be moved off to another date, so I thank him for that suggestion as well. There being no further business, a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Cannelli, seconded by Mr. Convettito. All in favor, raise your hand. Adjournment is ordered.